Yeah, second lift in here. Okay, and then we're gonna pound it until we have this uh thing nice looking really good here.
So this is the last lift you're doing huh?
No, no, I have to do three more lifts after this.
Oh.
Okay, so let me turn this on. So it gets twenty-five lift. Now we're gonna let it rip. Okay. It looks really good right now, yeah.
So it's kinda like uh what happens in a black hole or a dwarf star gets compacted density, yes?
Heavy.
Tighter, yeah, we're just gonna pound it, see how hard it will get. That's what we're basically doing here.
And we take this, alright, and just get it nice and clean here.
Smells like dirt.
Oh yeah, it is. This little clay, probably soap, so I strike this off, okay? I wanna make it nice and smooth and even here with the plug, okay? So.
That's cool, man.
Oh yeah.
Do you ever kind of uh imagine that was chocolate or something?
No, sometimes they have.
What do you think about?
Different smells and stuff, so they're a little interesting. So we, once uh, sometimes you, I mean after a while you can kind of, I mean it's like any job, you can kind of tell what the numbers are gonna be.
Take your plugs very seriously.
Oh yeah, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
We're trying, it's quality control, we wanna make sure that, well, we tell someone out in the field, this is what the real numbers are. So we'll make it nice and smooth right here. So what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna weigh this. I know the weight of the plug, I mean the weight of the mold, alright, so let's find out what it is.
Okay.
So, and I put it down on here, so it weighs thirty-five eighty-four point six grams, okay?
So basically from that weight you can tell how the compaction is, it's a good compaction or not.
Right.
You got the number.
Right.
Alright, what is that used for? What is that number good for you?
Let me have a look. Well, here, take a look at it.
So with that number, you give this to the contractor and what is that, what do you say? Hey, this is good, this is bad?
What we'll do is we'll, not this, not these numbers, we'll give them the results and we'll say, hey look, you got, on your soil, you got a ninety-five percent and it passed, okay?
So would this be a ninety-five percenter?
Um, I hope so, yes. The bottom line is that when the contractor's gonna ask me, says, hey, did my soil pass? Once I've done this test, I can tell him, yes, I can say, hey, alright.
This would've passed?
Probably, yeah, it looks good.
Nice, yeah, that was cool, man.
Okay, you got it?
Yeah, yeah, can I keep this?
Sure, if you like.
Thanks, Jay, that was good stuff.
Hey, sure.
Keep dirtin' away.
Alright.
Up next, caught, canned, and eaten. The history of the San Pedro tuna industry at the Maritime Museum. San Pedro was the fishing capital of the nation for much of the twentieth century. Generations of fishermen sold their catches of tuna, squid, mackerel, and sardines to local fish markets and cannery. Today, the fishing fleet is greatly diminished and the cannery has closed, but the legacy of the fishing and the canning industry endure. The caught, canned, and eaten exhibit is on permanent display at the Maritime Museum, and I caught up with the director for an onsite tour.
I'm Mary Frances Travelli, and I'm the director of the Los Angeles Maritime Museum. Hey, James!
Hey, how you doing?
Nice to see you!
Nice to see you.
Welcome to the museum!
Thank you so much, I was reading here that
Yeah.
San Pedro was the fishing capital of the nation for the twentieth.
That was true! Hey, you know, this is an exhibit especially devoted to the fishing and canning industries. Would you like to see some of it?
Yeah, I'd love to see some of it, let me show me around here.
Alright, let's go.
Who, what is this little beauty?
Oh, this is a tiny one-cylinder engine, and it is representative of the type that powered the earliest fishing boats. So we started off small in the harbor.
Uh-huh.
And this is the area of the exhibit that you would call the caught part. And then later we'll look at canned and eaten.
Alright, so nineteen-twenty, more or less, this was kinda?
Early on, yeah.
Okay, great. And what, what year did this kind of get going and what did it start here in San Pedro?
Well, actually, we started experimenting with canning the fish in nineteen oh three.
Nineteen oh three.
So, early on, of course, Native Americans always, you know, fish was always a source of food, but as far as industrializing and really getting those wheels turning, beginning of the twentieth century.
And that made San Pedro boom?
It did, because you had multi-generations working on the boats, owning the boats, starting their own businesses.
Right.
So.
Yeah, became a lifestyle.
That's correct. Let me show you some of these nets. Go ahead.
Oh yeah, so these are the nets they used back in the, what, twenties, thirties?
Well, actually, later, these are synthetic, they're really tough, you can pull on them. It's how we teach the kids about the net being designed.
Right.
Depending on what kind of fish you wanted to catch. And this was a big revolution for the fishermen, because prior to that, when the nets were cotton, they required a lot of work, mending, you had to make sure they didn't rot in the heat and the water. Here we have synthetic, and a lot of our visitors like to just pull these, get a sense of their strength, and noticing the fact that the larger the fish you're catching, the larger the hole in the net. And if you're catching tiny fish, like a mackerel, a little sardine, you're gonna have a smaller hole.
Right, so this changed the game basically, 'cause uh synthetic nets, the nets last longer?
Yes, and made work easier for them.
Right.
You did want to invest your money into a good net, and it would repay you.
Right, and how many fishermen would you say were in the, you know, in the twenties or thirties when it first started going, how many fishermen were?
Oh, there were thousands, because not only the San Pedro natives, but people from San Diego and other parts of the country, Washington State, would come down here for the fishing.
Okay, they come down, but it's still a process here.
Processed here, but the fishing was done here.
Oh wow.
Yeah.
Wow, very cool. What else we got here?
Okay.
Oh, these are great old photos here.
These are just an example of the men and women who cleaned the fish by hand and packed it into the cans.
Yeah, can you imagine, by hand, all those fish?
That's right.
Back then, huh?
That's right, and talks about the type of work they did. It wasn't easy, they were on their feet a lot of the day. And also, people in town still remember the smell that would be in the air when the cannery workers were getting back from work. And we have a little box here where you can experience some of that smell today.
Oh yeah, let's check this out.
So why don't you give it a whiff?
Ooh, yeah, that's, that's cute.
Yeah, that's pretty good. That is how it would smell, and everyone in town knew that smell, and a lot of people called it perfume, the smell of money.
Yeah.
Meaning that the cannerys are very busy, a lot of fish being processed, and that's the smell.
Yeah, so they're excited to smell that every day and know that they're busy.
That's right, that's right.
That's great.
Alright, let me show you something you might remember. Now, this is a really fun section. Here we have some of our, our once-local companies, like Chicken in the Sea, and Starkist, and French Sardine, and examples of a lot of the promotional products that they would make. If you worked at the cannery at Christmas time, you could expect to receive maybe a set of glasses along with some cases of tuna. We have wristwatches, golf balls, you name it. If you were a consumer, you could send away some of the labels from the cans of tuna, and you could get a tuna baker, salt and pepper shaker, a platter. These things are very common, and today they're highly collectible, as you can guess.
Yeah, these look pretty cool, I think my mom's had some of these things in her house.
She probably did.
Yeah, so these were the major tuna companies?
That's right, and they did a lot of outreach to the consumer like that. And this little paper hat that says Starkist was actually given to you if you toured the plant.
Oh wow.
That was your little souvenir hat. And we still have people who remember touring the plant as schoolkids on a field trip to Terminal Island, and they would receive a paper hat.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
And Starkist was one of the anchor cannerys here in the?
That's right, that's right.
Who also was some of the major company?
Well, we all know Chicken of the Sea.
Right.
Um, they were here for a long time. There was, um, their predecessor, French Sardine, it was Franco-Italian.
Right.
And there were lots of smaller companies too. They didn't last long, but while they were here, they made an impact as well.
Wow, so how long did the major companies kind of thrive in San Pedro?
Probably right up until the nineteen-sixties, and then a lot of them relocated overseas, and the jobs went with them.
Wow, tell me about the decline and what happened here.
Yeah, that's a great question. What happened to these huge companies like Starkist and Chicken of the Sea? They were such a presence here, and then all of a sudden, they were gone.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, it was a variety of reasons. Um, the companies found it less expensive if they would operate their cannerys overseas. And we've seen that with a lot of industries in our country. Also, uh, countries in South America started, um, having territorial wars over where you could fish off their coastline, and we had fishermen who had their boats seized or their nets seized. It became very expensive to them. There's the cyclical nature of fish, some years were naturally better than others to fish. And of course, foreign competition, and then insurance rates, it was almost like a perfect storm, all these things happening to the port of LA's fishing industry.
Right, right, so it came down to finances, they can do it cheaper somewhere else, and I guess the government didn't kind of help the industry out much by?
That's correct, you got it.
All the regulations. So I have this, I saw this can here, what does that can say?
This artifact really speaks a lot to what happened. It says US tuna, and it says contents, nothing. Through congressional inaction, the market has been captured by foreign flags and been transferred. So.
Says it all right there, huh?
Says it all right there, an empty can.
The industry went somewhere else where it's cheaper.
Right.
As it does to a lot of industry. And what is this, a cannery nurse here?
Oh, almost, this is actually the uniform of a cannery worker. We know who wore this, her name was Minnie Laverini, and she came to San Pedro at age fifteen with her family. She worked at Starkist until she married. But actually, yes, the cannery workers did wear nurses' uniforms. The cannery owners felt that it would imply cleanliness in the operation, sanitation. And in town, um, you would refer to the female cannery workers as tuna nurses.
Tuna nurses.
So there's the uniform. Let me show you the really fun part of this exhibit. This is all about the fishermen's fiesta.
The fiesta on film.
Think of the Rose Bowl on water, the Rose Bowl Parade, because people would spend hours decorating their boats.
Yeah.
With different tissue, paper, flowers, and totally disguising them to look like something else. Sea creatures, um, famous parts of history, you name it.
Yeah, they look like big floats.
That's right, and they had a parade, prizes, and a lot of families would bring their friends onboard. You can see lots of dancing and eating, and it was really wonderful. And it was meant, um, to bless the fleet for the coming year.
Uh-huh.
And to celebrate all that the industry had offered people.
Right, so these were the good days, and they're, uh, fruition.
That's right.
And every year they did this?
They did it annually, and of course, uh, now it does not happen.
Right.
But, uh, in the heyday, in the fifties and sixties, right after World War Two, it was really big. They estimate over two-hundred thousand people lined the docks, uh, down by the fish markets at the south end of what is now Puerto Cal to watch the parade. Just a really wonderful time.
Yeah, it's great to see this old footage of these like home movies almost.
That's right, and actually, these are home movies that were donated to the museum so that we could all enjoy them.
Oh, that's great.
Look at all the work that went into that.
Yeah, very ornate, that's amazing.
Of course, when the fiesta ended, it was right back to work, right back to sea.
Right. Yeah, that's very nice, Mary Frances, this is a cool little exhibit here.
Yeah.
Up next, we'll visit the port's graveyard for abandoned ships. Someone once said, "The best days you'll have as a boat owner is the day you buy the boat and the day you sell it." But what if no one wants it? Unlike a car, the stressed boat has almost no value. Some owners have resorted to sinking old vessels, which is not only against the law, but damages the marine environment. To cope with that issue of the problem, check out the vessel disposal program.
Hi, I'm Kat, I'm an environmental specialist with the Port of Los Angeles.
So as an environmental specialist, tell me a little about the vessel program and what's the benefit?
Well, we have a program that the Port of Los Angeles has initiated. It looks at some of these older vessels, um, that are getting in kind of disrepair. The problem is, is that, uh, there's a lot of things that are on a vessel that can harm the environment. And if you think about it, they've got the, uh, engine that has gasoline, that has oil. Um, if there's other things, there, there could be, uh, antifreeze, there could be anything that you think of that you have in your car on a, on a daily basis that could get into the water and harm the aquatic, uh, organisms that are there.
Right, and over the years, a lot of the owners or industry has just kind of sunk their ships or left it in the harbor?
Yeah, the problem is, a lot of people, they don't have the money to keep it up. Maybe they've kind of forgotten they have the boats, they get into disrepair, and the water is a really cruel environment. It can, you know, take the advantage of something like that. And, um, something happens, a leak gets in there, these old boats, and it's gonna sink.
Right.
And then that goes into the water.
And that hurts all the marine life in the marinas.
Exactly, exactly.
So we see this little old boat, about fifty years old maybe, getting kind of dismantled and
Exactly.
broken up, huh?
So we went into that, we cleaned out everything before we got to this point, that, that could be a problem. We took out the, the engine, we took out the oil, and now what we're doing is taking it up piece by piece, dismantling it, uh, it won't get used again, it won't harm the environment.
So the recycling action is this, we're breaking it up, we're breaking it down into small pieces, and then it gets, where, taken out to?
We'll have, we'll have, uh, it, uh, broken up into different pieces, the wood will go into, what we can recycle with, the wood will get recycled, we'll take out any of the metal, that will get recycled, and everything else will get disposed of properly.
So I'm an ocean guy, tell me why we just can't take these boats and sink them and create an artificial reef or something?
Right, um, artificial reefs are actually a really good thing, and that, that is, works in some cases uh, in a controlled environment as well. Um, what doesn't work here is, what we're trying to prevent is things actually sinking in the marinas, not out, uh, in the open ocean where it would be more of a benefit. And then another problem is that with a lot of these old wooden boats, it's very hard to get them to sink, to stay down, you have to do a lot of work in order to make that happen. So it's actually a long, lengthy process to get that to happen, and, uh, it's a kind of, uh, expensive. So, um, we would never, um, uh, discourage a boat owner from trying to go down that process if they have, uh, the right kind of vessel to do that. They would need to work with the right agencies in order to do that. This program is really to help prevent, uh, accidents from happening, from boats from just sinking due to neglect and wear and tear.
Right, so the bottom line is, if you are gonna create an artificial reef or someone wants to, there's a lot of formal steps you have to go through to keep the ocean safe.
Exactly.
And who in the marina is eligible to have their ship kind of dismantled or taken over by the city?
If you own a boat in one of our seventeen marinas at the Port of Los Angeles, you are eligible.
Another little piece that keeps the, the waters clean and keeps the port clean in Los Angeles.
Exactly.
So all those pieces working together.
Exactly, it's one of the many programs that we have here, and a really, uh, important and successful one.
Alright, Kat, thanks. And they, they got rid of this boat pretty quick.
They did.
Went fast, huh?
They did, did a good number on it.
I'm thinking fifty years of old boat and it's gone like that.
Gone like that.
But in a safe way.
Exactly, that's the important thing.
I hope you enjoyed this edition of Portfolio. I'm James Ramirez, and I'll see you next time.
Television, telephone, and the internet are all great ways, as well as being here live and in person. Four ways to follow, uh, your city government in action. We wanna thank all the members who are here on time, we do have twelve members, so Madam Clerk, if you'll please call a roll.
Our Conquered in his hand, we's our Carretts, Picoy and Labanche Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenbelle Smith, Weston Zine, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Weston seconds, without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Carratt's moves, and Mr. Labanche's seconds, without objections, those will be approved as well. We're gonna run through the agenda now, colleagues. Madam Clerk, if you run through the agenda and any items, colleagues, that you'd like to call special now, uh, we're going to do that, so first items, please.
Uh, Mr. President, there's a request to continue items eight, nine, and ten for one week, and that would be March seventeenth.
Okay, colleagues, if there's no objection, we'll continue those three, uh, for one week until the seventeenth, that's eight, nine, and ten. Next items?
Next items, uh, items for which public hearings have been held, items one and two, uh, budget and finance reports are in the process of being submitted to the council.
Okay, uh, we'll wait for those, we'll hold those on the table. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items three through eleven. Uh, items eight, nine, and ten have already been acted on, and council has cards on three, five, seven, and eleven.
Okay, I think we're gonna continue three if we, uh, may, so we'll continue that, uh, unless anybody from the council wanted to call that special, Mr. Parks, did you? Okay.
And if we could have the discussion with one, two, and seven together?
One, two, and seven together, we'll try to link those together. Let's, uh, continue three, uh, for a week. Um, and, uh, that And that leaves us with four, five, six, and 11. We have cards on four, five, and six, as well as number 11. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? I know we have this called for special for cards, but any of those items, we'll take those up as they come about. Mr. Weston would like to make an introduction. I'd like to recognize him this time.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. President. We have a very important visitor who is visiting us today from the great country of Korea. He is a National Assembly member. His name is Chung Dong Young. If you could give him a round of applause. For those of you that don't know, here to make sure you get in the picture, I want everybody to see how handsome and young you are. For those of you that don't know, he was a candidate for president of Korea in 2007. The Korean Assembly is like our Congress, so even though he is called an Assemblyman, if he were here, he'd be a congressman. He used to be the minister for unification of the two countries. He's currently in charge of the Foreign Affairs Committee. He's in his third term, and each term is four years. He was visiting Washington, D.C., and he stopped here in Los Angeles to visit the Korean community. As many of you know, the Korean community in Los Angeles is the largest community outside of Korea. So if we could please again give Assemblyman Chung Dong Young another round of applause. You want to say a quick word?
Respected President Gary Garcetti, thank you for giving me this opportunity to extend my greetings to the members of LA City Council, who are at the start of a very important session. Respected City Council members, the city of Los Angeles has the largest Korean-American community outside of Korea. L.A. is the city many Koreans yearn for most. And let me say, as you know, Koreans love to sing. There was a hit song called "The L.A. International Airport", where many Koreans had to see off their loving people with heartbreaking pain. By the way, if you go to Koreatown, you can easily find out the karaoke place. If you practice singing "The L.A. International Airport" for just an hour, you would become an instant Korean pop star, and I will arrange for your debut in Seoul, Korea. Many Korean-American people are grateful to L.A. The city has provided them an opportunity for economic prosperity. Many hard-working Koreans have succeeded in their businesses, as well as in raising and educating their children. Now, Korean-American people want to contribute to American society politically and socially. I'd like to see that you, City Council members, give Korean-American people a bigger role to serve the city of L.A. and American society. I was a broadcast journalist here, assigned to L.A. for one of Korea's TV networks. My two kids went to elementary school here, L.A. You know what they say now. They say it was the happiest time of their life when they attended the school here in L.A. L.A. is a diverse international city, to which peoples of different ethnic origins came here, came from different parts of the world. They came here to realize their dreams. Diversity and harmony made L.A. a great city, and also it made the United States a great society, which is Korea's best friend and ally. Korea has been a traditionally homogeneous country for thousands of years, but now Korea is becoming a country of diversity. One million people of other nationalities have come to Korea to work and to live. We have to learn from your experience and your vision for building a beautiful community of human society among peoples of different ethnic and cultural backgrounds. As you know, Korea is the only nation that is still divided into the North and the South. As Los Angeles gave all nations an opportunity to realize their dreams, we have the dream that Koreans overcome the division to live peacefully together and to share the benefits of prosperity, working together with other nations of the world to build a better world. I'd like to conclude my greetings by asking you to have an interest and support for Korea and Korean-American community in L.A. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labanj briefly.
Mr. Weston, if I could, Mr. Sevenman, you'd be proud to know that just last weekend, over a thousand young Korean-Americans from high schools all over Southern California came to Griffith Park to help restore the park, which they love. The older Korean-Americans call it Nam Sung North in our park in the center of Los Angeles, and they helped us clean up after a devastating fire that we had three years ago. So I say, "Kumsa midah."
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you very much, Assemblymember Chung, for being here. We now invite our general comment folks to come forward. Our first is in San Pedro. If we can go to San Pedro, and Prashad Kanardi is our first speaker. Good morning, Mr. Kanardi.
Good morning, honorable members of the council. The city has committed hundreds of millions of dollars to capital improvement projects, or in short, CIP, with no centralized oversight. No one in this city knows how many projects there are now, or how much money we have committed to them. Some projects are in progress now, others are budgeted but haven't been bid or haven't received a notice to proceed. If a project is budgeted, that money is treated as if it has already been spent, even though the city still has actual control of that money. I ask the council to direct all the department heads to freeze the funding on all CIP projects immediately. No city funds should be released for CIP projects until the department heads establish beyond doubt that the work must be done immediately. They should present the project justification directly to the council at a public meeting. The council should provide the centralized oversight this city needs. If a project can be delayed, postponed, reduced, or canceled, we want this council to make that determination and do it now. If a project has not awarded, stop the bidding process until the scope, cost, and schedule have been reviewed and adjusted wherever possible. As an engineer who works on CIP projects, I believe we can save hundreds of millions by simply postponing projects that are not time-critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kanardi. Timothy Butcher is our next speaker here in Council Chambers.
Good morning. I would like to commend this council for the work that you have done with Labor in times past, helping us to figure out this budget crisis, to help us work through this time, and to be able to save those services that are important to the citizens in this city. I'd like to encourage you to keep working with us, continue to help us to find ways, to think outside of the box, to create revenue, to work through efficiencies, to be able to save those services that are important for the quality of life that we have in this city. I would also like to encourage you that when you consider any sort of cuts to personnel, which would then affect services to the people, that you would yield a scalpel rather than an axe. Remember that you're affecting lives, people's quality of life, and I would encourage you to please continue to work with us. Do not make unilateral decisions. Allow us to help you to figure this out. Remember that this council makes policy for the city, and it is then the job of the mayor to execute those policies, and it is not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butcher. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be John Walsh.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Maybe you might have seen the story in yesterday's LA Times regarding "Not Present But Accounted For," and it detailed how the council votes when people aren't in their seats. And it was an issue that I brought up about three years ago when I first started coming here, because I was amazed to look at the tote board and see the count numbers, but there'd only be like six or seven council members in their seats, yet the tote boards would read 12-nothing, 14-nothing, 10-nothing. And here at the Times, it's three years later. But what was really interesting in this story is that the person who wrote it stated that the city attorney authorized the procedure that now occurs. And I'm amazed, because what does the city attorney have to do with legislating the laws of the council chambers? Because there's a direct rule that's specific to your attendance, to voting on items, and to sitting in your seats, and to being in council chambers. And it's one of those rules that have an asterisk, which means that it can be changed if the council votes on it. Now, if the council didn't vote on it, then you have no right to leave the chambers, or no right to go anywhere else, or no right to vote, or no right to have your votes seated as a yes when you're not voting. It doesn't say "change with a vote," or "if the city attorney says so." It says "change with a vote." And I've always been interested to find out how you voted so you don't have to vote, because that's what had been the procedure, to change the rules. And we know you've changed the rules because you changed the rules on the quorum. And the city attorney didn't say, "Hey, we don't like that. Get the hell out of here." You had to vote on it. You had to change the rules of the council. So did you change the rules on your voting procedure? Did you vote not to vote?
Thank you. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that will be Jacob Miller in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Walsh.
Morning, John Walsh. Blogging with Mickey Jackson at HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. Thirty-seven thousand hits a week. We'd like to-- got some good news from Mr. Weeza. I was over across the way at Board of Public Works. I told Cynthia Ruiz on the public comment that she would be creamed, she would lose the election, she wouldn't get 15% of the vote, and to stop thinking even of challenging Mr. Weeza. She looked worried. I think I've scared her away. The mayor's a paper tiger. No one is going to be opposing you in East L.A. Listen to me, I'm always right. It may sound psychotic, but I'm always right. People are saying, "John, you hear every single meeting since December 1st. This is my 12th time. It only seems like I'm here all the time." I'd like to say that we're very worried about Steve Rosendahl, Mr. Rosendahl's aide. I hope he's doing well. Incidentally, you tried to cover up his collapse the other day at the meeting. I exposed it. John North of Channel 7 exposed it with the camera. You pretended nothing happened, and I understand it took 18 minutes between the time the phone call was given to paramedics, and they came here. That's unacceptable. You know why it's unacceptable? Because you're cutting ambulances. It would have been very, very embarrassing for Mr. Our-- incidentally, I was told that if I call you Eric one more time, I will be arrested. I have to treat you like a fieldhand in the South. I must come down and say massa. So I'll say, "Masa, City Council President." I want to tell you what the rules are here as far as constantly being threatened for being arrested. And incidentally, come to our website, because we now have, right now, Al Qaeda's favorite city-elected official with all the details. I've got news for you. It's nobody up here. HollywoodHighlands.org. It took you 20 minutes to get a paramedic here.
Thank you very much, and for the record, we'll guarantee you won't get arrested for calling me Eric. Just I'll state that on the record, and we had a response here in less than a minute. Jacob Miller is our next speaker in Van Nuys. Chris Ryder will follow back here in Council Chambers. Good morning, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, City Council. I would like to thank you for your continued support and continued cooperation with the Coalition of Unions. I think that we can definitely find a solution to this budget crisis that shouldn't involve layoffs or budget cuts, I mean salary cuts. The matter that I want to speak to you today about was about shared sacrifice. Our coalition members made concessions, many, many concessions, which came out to around 6% cuts in our salary. And I'm wondering where the shared sacrifice is, because nobody else besides the General Fund and maybe a few other people are taking these sort of cuts. Why can't we get some folks in DWP to make some cuts? Help us out here a little bit. You know, there was also a mention in an LA Times editorial that there's just not enough bureaucracy to cut, and that just can't be true. Take a look at these departments. When you call these general managers in to speak about the cuts that they want to make, ask about how much staff they have at the top that they are unwilling to cut. We have several people in our administration, several more people than we need, and if they were to just simply restructure our department, we could save hundreds of thousands, if not millions, off of our budget. Thank you very much, and once again, please continue to work with the coalition. We have many, many, many money-saving ideas and cost-- I'm sorry, revenue-generating ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Appreciate it. Chris Ryder is our next speaker. After Mr. Ryder will be Wes Pringle. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about the layoffs. I commend you for the good work we've done on the first round of layoffs in terms of moving people from general-funded positions, especially funded positions. But it's been brought up to me by various managers that these transfers could have happened months before they did and saved the city even more money. And when I ask myself why they weren't done, it just seems to me people seem to like power. They seem to like having employees under them. They seem to like having their budgets a certain size. So forgive me if any of these numbers I'm quoting are wrong. I got them from a Daily News article. But there are about 35,000 employees in the city of L.A. 10,000 of them are specially funded. Out of that remaining 25,000, 10,000 come from police, 3,500 come from fire department. Now, the City Council authorized layoffs of 4,000 people from generally funded positions, and we've heard that it's not coming from police, it's not coming from fire. So that leaves 11,500 employees. We're going to cut one-third of those employees. So I echo the last speaker's comments that where's the shared sacrifice? If these layoffs do happen, why are they coming just from these positions? I understand the mayor emphasizes safety with the police and the fire, and these things are important, but if we cut one-third of this workforce, what city are we still protecting? What are they-- what's the safety of the city and the rest of that? And I just say that, you know, how this budget situation is handled is going to be the council's legacy, and I urge you to look at that when you think about budget cuts and different alternatives to doing these layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work you do. Wes Pringle is our next speaker.
Good morning, sir. Hi, I'm Wes Pringle. I'm an engineer for the Department of Transportation. I'm also in MOU 8. I work in development review, which means that our understaff section reviews the traffic impacts from a range of developments from the billion-dollar Wilshire Grand Project, L.A. Live, the USC Master Plan, the new police station across the street, dozens of schools, and federally-funded affordable housing projects, just to name a few. In July, and it continues today, my hours were cut and my promotional chances vanished. But if I really wanted to get depressed, I could pick up the Daily News to read what they think about me and the other city employees. Despite this, I get up in the morning, and I come down here and do the best job I can. And when your deputies call me and they need my assistance on a project that's important to your constituents, I help them to the best I abilities. And I'm no different than the 4,000 people that you're willing to let go. We work hard because we care. Let's see if we can contract that out. Let's see if you can contract that out.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work you do, Mr. Pringle. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
All right. Thank you. Yes, so first of all, I want to make a comment right now about the performance of the city council. In the words of Adam Sandler, "You suck." And I'm allowed to say that, and it's a good lesson for all the kids who are here. I want to shout, shout out to them. See, I'm Matt Dowd, I've, uh, I was in court, the city had their attorneys come down to the beach, I'm playing guitar, they've sent undercover cops down there to do a sting on my CD, which I make myself, it's my own music. There's no drugs, there's no guns, there's no crack, there's no counterfeit merchandise, there's no Gucci wallets. There's not a crime in sight, and there's five LAPD, and you wonder why you're losing your jobs, everyone's getting fired today. If you stick around long enough, you'll hear about 4,000 people. See, they talk about it being the city family here. I've heard that, oh, the city family, you know, we don't, we don't want to fire anyone. Oh, you know, we, and then they just fire 4,000 people. Because why? For four years, I've been here telling them, don't follow every other city around here into the hole, because they came and tried to hound us off the beach with the police. Because Santa Monica did it. See, Santa Monica. Oh, how lovely for Santa Monica. That's a Nazi city. And that's the word on the street. They hate Santa Monica. Everybody comes to Venice, but you copied them down the hole, the pension hole, you've lost all the pension money. The city has a structural deficit that's, that they're, it's unable to surmount this one, so it's over for the city and I'll be back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. That'll finish our public comment for today. Um, we now will go to the items that were called special. Mr. Parks has asked for items, um, 1, 2, and 7, I believe, to be taken together. Is that right? Okay?
Yes.
On item 7, we do have cards. You want to take those first?
Yes. What I'd like to do is if we can follow the order that we do 1, 2, and then 7 last, because I think it's.
Okay, why don't we take 1 and 2 then first, and then I'll come to the cards on 7 after that? Okay? So, uh, go ahead, Mr. Parks, on items 1 and 2.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the, uh, city staff to come up, uh, on items 1 and 2, DWP pensions, Lasers pensions, and fire police pensions. Colleagues, just setting the perspective on these two items, there was a motion that went forward asking first for the three pension systems to respond to the issue of the placement agents, and that's item 1. And then item 2 is that we ask all three pension systems to respond to the League of Women Voters, uh, document that was submitted, uh, to the city several months ago.
Mr. Parks? If I, if I could just interrupt you very briefly. Mr. Cardenas wanted to introduce all these fine young people that are in the council chambers, and then, because I know that's going to take a little longer to do that, but, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and thank you, member, uh, Councilmember Parks, before we get into this lengthy, important discussion. Um, I'd just like to introduce Vena Elementary School. Could you please stand, children? Wave hello, welcome to your city hall. And, uh, these are fourth grade, fourth grade magnet students. They normally would go to Sacramento, to the state capitol, but they've improved their situation by coming here to local government and city hall, where the real rubber meets the road. And, uh, so they're going to spend the day in, in their city hall, and we're going to make sure that they, they visit and enjoy themselves and learn a lot. In addition to that, I'd like to give a special thanks to Angela Chavez, who's the teacher who arranged this, uh, this trip for the children. So congratulations, children, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and, and thank you, Mr. Parks, for your accommodation, and we'll return back to, uh, Mr. Parks's questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. Yes, colleagues, basically, we're going to go through number 1 and address the, uh, third-party agent, and then we'll go to number 2, dealing with the League of Women Voters. And then, I believe, from that information, it will dovetail nicely into number 7, which is then asking about changes in future pensions. And so if we can ask the same question of each pension system, if you can just advise the council of what you've done about the third-party placement agents in each system.
Mary Higgins from the Water and Power Employees Retirement Plan. Uh, the retirement board took the development and implementation of the policy, the placement agent policy, very seriously. A policy was adopted on July 1st, 2009, and is based on the CalPERS model. The policy requires existing or proposed investment managers, consultants, and contractors to disclose any payments, relationships, compensation, and fees paid to placement agencies or third-party marketers in connection with our investments. In addition, the board, um, requested and received from staff a survey of all current managers. Only two of them had used placement agents, and they were fully disclosed at the time of, um, the, they were selected.
Good morning. Sally Choi, General Manager of the Los Angeles City Employee Retirement System. Uh, the Lasers Board, back in April 2009, adopted a policy requiring all investment managers and consultants to disclose the use of third-party marketers, or here known as placement agents, or anyone who's referred any business to us for consideration for investments. This, uh, policy was adopted and has since been incorporated into all of our investment policies and their due diligence process. So at the time we're considering an investment, we identify if there's a, uh, placement agent involved and how much they're, um, getting compensated by the investment manager. Since then, um, this, the state legislature adopted, um, or the governor passed legislation, AB 1584, which requires all public pension plans in the state of California to adopt a similar type of disclosure policy for placement agents. So we're, um, further enhancing our existing policy to incorporate some of the other provisions of that law, which also requires penalties if, if the manager fails to disclose the use of placement agents or the, um, the compensation provided.
Sally, could you, one thing, and I forgot to ask, just explain to the public what a placement agent is.
Placement agent is, is, uh, what you might call intermediary. They are a third-party marketing, um, firm, oftentimes an investment manager. This is typically used in the case of private equity or real estate funds, uh, where you have a general partner and they, they will seek, they'll use the services of a third-party, um, placement agent who will, um, help market their products to institutional investors, such as public pension plans. They help in putting the proposals together and also identifying, um, appropriate investors for their particular product. They in turn get compensated by that investment managers. Typically, it could be anywhere from a percent, 1 percent of the assets raised, um, from their efforts. Um, and so they, they pay, they play a critical role in, um, in making the connections between institutional investors and managers, especially in the cases of small or emerging managers who don't have the marketing, um, capabilities within their own staff, so they'll hire a third-party to assist them in that endeavor. Um, this has been a long practice. Um, this has been in existence for as long as I think private equity's been around, or in, it's also utilized, um, by in-house marketers, um, from different investment managers. So this is not a unique thing. This really became, came to light because of troubles and other pension systems where there was abuse with regard to placement agents.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Laura Guglielma with, uh, L.A. Fire and Police Pensions. L.A. Fire and Police Pensions has had a practice, although not a policy, of requiring our investors to disclose their placement agents, uh, for, for a number of years. However, we did not initially have any, um, sanctions against them if they had not, or we didn't necessarily know if they didn't disclose the use of a placement agent. And, uh, on July 23rd, 2009, the board adopted a comprehensive contractor disclosure policy that, um, has similar provisions that we've talked about today, that put sanctions in place, um, that, um, required the disclosure of contacts and that sort of thing. Then, um, after the passage of 1584, the board reviewed staff and, um, reviewed the, the differences in our contractor disclosure policy with the provisions in 1584. Proposed changes to our policy to be in compliance with 1584, and our board recently adopted that revised policy, which is in compliance with 1584. And I'd also like to point out that the three systems here in Los Angeles are far ahead of other systems in Los Angeles in compliance with 1584.
Okay. And colleagues, one of the things that I think is important on this discussion is to be aware that this issue of placement agents came to us very graphically in some investigations in New York, New Mexico, and I believe in Oklahoma or Texas. So there, there are some issues dealing with criminal activity, and this is why we've asked the pension systems to look at this particular issue, uh, very clearly. Uh, this matter was, uh, discussed at Budget and Finance on Monday, and to review all these reports, and I believe that the only piece that was lacking is that, uh, the actual policy statement from DWP to be added to council file, and we just asked that that be done, because we're going to ask the CAO to look at this issue in a larger sense as they go through restructuring.
And the policy has been emailed to the city clerk and will be formally transmitted today.
Okay. And colleagues, if there are no questions on item 1 before we go to item 2, I'd just ask that we make a couple of corrections on the Budget and Finance committee report. We have a sequential order, we have two number fours, and so if we could just make those numbers 1 through 6 instead of 1 through 5, and then, uh, on items 3, 4, 5, and 6, if we could ask for those report backs, the Budget and Finance, within two weeks, we can then have that material available as the CAO continues the negotiation on a pension structure. Thank you.
Um, all right, why don't we take up number 2, Mr. Parks?
If no questions on 1, we go to number 2 very easily. Okay? All right. On item 2, we have the issue of dealing with the, um, League of Women Voters. And also, colleagues, just so we can give you the background on this discussion, none of these pension systems have the ability to go into the report and recommend or basically choose not to defend or to say do not go forward on any part of this report, because they manage the funds in our behalf, but they're not in an advocacy role as it relates to the different issues. That is more the role of the council directing different pieces of this report to the CAO if you wish to see it in a reconstructed pension plan. So we're going to ask them to respond the same way of each, uh, uh, fund to explain on the issues of the League of Women Voters report, what you can share with us on the technical aspect as opposed to an advocacy or recommending any action taken.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sally Choi again with Lasers. Um, again, just to remind everyone of Lasers' role, we are the administrator of the retirement plans. We are not in a position to, um, or have the authority to negotiate or help design the benefits. So we will administer whatever plan that the plan sponsor, which is the city, uh, as directed by the city council and mayor. So we are here to, um, comment on the recommendations provided by the League of Women Voters on the technical aspects of the proposals and explain to you what the impacts might be. Uh, one of the major recommendations in the League of Women Voters report, they examined the, um, retirement plans for both Lasers, which covers all civilian employees in the city of L.A., with the exception of DWP employees, and then they also looked at the, um, the Fire and Police Pension Plan. So we'll comment specifically on Lasers. One of the, uh, issues that was raised in, uh, for consideration or for your consideration is the concept of a defined contribution plan. As you know, Lasers has what's called a defined benefit plan, and that's the case for all three of our systems. That is basically a plan that is, uh, or the benefit that is based on your final compensation, a benefit factor, um, a formula used, and your, um, years of service, your service credit. So for Lasers, to get a full retirement, you have to be at least age 55 with 30 years of service, or age 60 with 10 years of continuous service, or age 70. So based on that, if you meet that eligibility, your retirement formula will be based on your final compensation, 12 months, highest compensation, times a year's of service, times a benefit factor of 2.16 percent. And that is your, your final allowance will be when you retire. So that's a defined benefit plan, so it's based on a set formula that is guaranteed. So as long as you meet that eligibility, you'll get that allowance guaranteed, regardless of the performance of the fund on our assets, because it's a defined benefit plan. What's a, what, um, a defined contribution plan, uh, which is typically used or more commonly used in the private sector, is a 401K plan style. So that is based on just, um, investment of, in an individual's assets, and they get to control the investment of those, um, those contributions or those, uh, assets. And your retirement would then be based on what, the value of your account at the time you retire. So let's say you put in 6 percent of your pay every pay period, you, you tuck that away, you invest it, and at the time that you retire, and there's no eligibility requirement per se, um, you have $100,000 in your account. So that is basically what you will retire on, and it's up to you how you want to use that money. So it's, it's, um, based on market performance, and it's very sensitive to the investment decisions that the individual makes. So there's no guaranteed benefit as you have in a defined benefit plan. So that's one of the, uh, recommendations that was made, to consider a defined contribution plan, which in essence would be a lower-cost plan for the plan sponsor, because you're not putting away as much money in a defined benefit plan. Not only do you have to put money away and fund your current liabilities, but you have to, you have to have the assets available to pay them for their lifetime, and then when that member dies, they're beneficiary. So it's a longer-term, um, plan, so you have to invest more money, and it costs more over the long run. So the issue with the defined contribution plan in our particular situation would not necessarily result in cost savings for the city, at least in the first 10, approximately 10 years, if you were to close down the DB plan, as it's commonly known, and only open a DC plan. So it wouldn't achieve, um, I think, the, um, objective of reducing the city's costs over the shorter term. Over a longer term, depending on how one, uh, defined contribution plan is designed, you could potentially find those savings, but it won't provide the adequacy of retirement that you would expect under a traditional defined benefit plan. So we did include a copy of a report from our actuary who examined this issue a few years back, when the Howard Jarvis Association had a couple of different ballot initiatives, state ballot initiatives, uh, mandating this for all public pension plans. So there is an analysis there, which comes to those conclusions that I just mentioned. Other areas, um, it also talks about some of the risks involved in converting to a DC plan, so, um, I'll wait for questions if there are any, but the report is attached to our, our response. The other areas, um, if the objective is to reduce the overall cost of a defined benefit plan, the League of Women Voters did propose some areas that you can consider to help reduce the cost in the long term. Uh, and that's in the, in the way of a new tier for new employees and modifying different features within the defined benefit plan that we have. So areas that will impact costs would be your highest compensation, as I mentioned, for Lasers. It's the highest 12-month, um, salary that we would base your retirement allowance. Uh, what's been suggested here is looking at a different time period, say, three-year final compensation as opposed to one year. Uh, other areas would be the retirement age. As I mentioned, ours is 55 with 30, or age 60 with 10. You could look at a, um, a later retirement age, because the idea is the longer a person works, you have more time to invest, there's, uh, our investment assets, and you have more time to fund their benefit, uh, when they retire at a later age. Also, you would have a shorter time period in which to pay out the retirement benefits when they retire. So that would be the idea behind having a higher retirement age. This is similar to what Social Security did in increasing its retirement age requirement for, to receive retire, uh, Social Security benefits. Other areas would be in the concept of, um, increasing the age for receiving the retiree health subsidy, retiree benefits. In the city of L.A., we provide retirees, um, a health benefit, which is pre-funded. This is unusual for most pension plans, but we pre-fund that, so requiring a higher retirement age requirement to receive that benefit, again, you would have the same results you would have for receiving a pension benefit. Other things is looking at the benefit factor. As I mentioned, ours is 2.16 percent for every year of service. One option would be to lower that benefit factor. I think the lowest benefit factor that's out there for California plans is about 1.62 percent for every year of service. So, um, that's another area that would reduce your costs, um, over the long run. All of these changes, uh, could be done, um, by ordinance change under, um, Lasers plans. And again, one of the things that we would caution you about is really when you look at what kind of defined benefit you want to offer, you want to know what, um, impact it will have on your recruiting and retention capabilities, because it should be driven by what your objective is in terms of the workforce you want to maintain in the city of L.A. So those are the general concept, and these are, um, your traditional. So those are the general concept, and these are your traditional areas that you would look at in terms of affecting cost of a plan. The other area, I'll just leave it, final note, is the cost of living adjustment that you get after retirement. One option is to look at the cost of living increases that you would receive under the retirement plan.
Could you think of Fire, Police, or Water Empower that would add to Sally's presentation?
Yes, I'd just like to point out for Fire and Police, we do have, for Fire and Police, we have six different plans that we administer with different benefit levels. Most of our members are currently under Tier Five, which is the most expensive of the current plans. And that plan, the factors that the League of Women Voters pointed out that Sally just summarized, those are the cost drivers, and we believe that you should, as a body and as a city, look at those factors and if there's a will to modify the pension plans to make them more sustainable over the long term, those are the factors that you should consider. In our history as a city, particularly on Fire and Police, we've seen that play out. In the late 1970s, we had Tier Two for our police officers and firefighters, which was, again, a fairly generous plan. At that time, the city was suffering with, after Prop 13, and reduced revenues and increased pension costs, and also a very low funded ratio. So this very same issue was before our city council in the late 1970s. And there was a charter change for L.A. Fire and Police as opposed to Lasers. To do a change does require a charter amendment. So I'd like you to keep in mind what your timeline is for that for the next citywide ballots, and if you're going to do some of these changes, certainly time is of the essence in getting those negotiated so that a successful ballot measure can move forward. But in the late 1970s, we switched from Tier Two to Tier Three, which lowered benefits. And then subsequently changed it again several years later to Tier Four, which lowered them slightly but a little bit more. Then in around the year 2000, 1999, I believe, the council voted to increase the benefits and move to the Tier Five. So the lesson for that is, in lean times, you reduce your benefits; in fat times, you increase your benefits. We'd encourage the council, as part of the negotiations and the actuaries and the city administrative officer when looking at these things, is to look at what the long-term sustainable level of benefits are to meet your long-term objectives and to refrain and maybe put some controls in place to prevent future councils from significantly increasing those benefits when times look a little bit better.
Thank you. Water Empower?
The Water and Power system, in addition to providing retirement benefits, also provides a comprehensive disability benefit that is administered for active members but is closely integrated with the retirement plan. Therefore, the Retirement Board recognizes that these benefit changes must look at the totality of the benefits sponsored by the plan and must go through a very deliberative process to investigate all impacts on the benefits and policies and go through a meet and confer and legislative process in order to implement. At this point, without that deliberative process being farther along in the process, it is not feasible at this time to implement those changes, and we can comment as the process continues.
On your changes within your system, is that a charter change or what's the process?
Our plan amendments are adopted both by the DWP Board of Commissioners and the Retirement Board. A few of our requirements are in the charter, however.
Okay. Well, colleagues, that concludes the presentations for item one and two, but I think it's important to realize Fire, Police is a charter issue. For Lasers, it's an ordinance issue, and for the DWP, it's an issue between their board and their commission primarily. And so those are the things that we wanted to set the stage so we can go into number seven, and if there's no questions on item two, we'll move the Budget and Finance report.
Mr. Parks, we have another speaker, and there's six cards on this matter.
Okay.
It's already had here. Do you want to open back up?
This is on one and two.
Item number two, we do have six cards. I understand it's already a public hearing. There are people here who wish to speak. Did you want to open it up?
They're fine.
So there's a request for opening for public speakers, no opposition. Mr. Garcetti, then we'll go to the public speakers on this matter. Pardon me? Okay. Arnold Sachs, he'll pass.
I thought you said the speaker's-
David Holtzman, followed by Pat McCosker.
My name is David Holtzman. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles, and I would like to thank this council for asking the city departments to consider and report on the League's recommendations and position regarding pension reform. I'd also like to thank the two departments, Lasers and FPP, that have come forward with reports so far, and particularly to mention that we appreciate the constructive criticism in the FPP report. I wanted to mention that the ballot measure campaign to put a constitutional amendment on the state ballot that would affect state pensions seems to have sputtered out. The Keith Richman Group's website says they've suspended their efforts, and I also wanted to correct something in one of the two reports, I forget which one, which said that you'd have to wait till May of 2011 or March of 2011 to put something on the ballot to change the city charter if necessary. I believe, as far as I know, you can actually put something on the ballot in November, consolidate with the statewide and federal elections, to change the charter if you need to do that. You just have to pay a small fee proportional to the size of the ballot, and since it's going to be a big ballot, one more proposition shouldn't cost the city too much to put it on the ballot in November, so you could do that. The League's report was put together through a comprehensive process where all the units around the city, all the League units around the city considered this matter, and we came to consensus on a position. Two leaders of that effort to prepare the report are here today. You'll be hearing comments from them shortly. They're Jane Gorchman, who once served as President of the League, one of my predecessors, and Elizabeth Ralston. And again, thank you for your consideration of the League's careful and consider reporting position.
Thank you. And we'll now hear from Jane Gorchman.
Good morning and thank you. I am Jane Gorchman from the League of Women Voters of L.A. We are delighted, absolutely delighted, that this commission is looking into and pursuing Councilman Parks's motion, and we're also delighted that Councilman Garcetti, Perry, and Rosendahl have another motion in regarding pension reform. I know this is something that makes everybody's eyes glaze over, but it's important, and you all know it's important now because of the budget crisis that we are facing in this city. We are asking you to focus on this long-term issue because as you deal with today's crisis, you also have to make sure that the future budgets of this city can be sustainable. And dealing with retirement benefits is one of the ways to make the future budgets of this city sustainable. Although we did not deal with the DWP because we had a large learning curve as it was, we fully support that this city look at the DWP pension benefits, or retirement benefits as well. The whole system has to be looked at because the whole city's financial security is involved. We urge you, we urge you to pursue these motions and your consideration of retirement benefit reform. Again, although it won't immediately hit the bottom line, it will hit the bottom line in the long term, and so you should and must pursue it. I think Sally and Fire and Police have gone over some of our key recommendations, so I won't reiterate them. We strongly urge you and the CAO to consider those as well as anything else that others can bring to the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, passing?
No.
Matt Dowd. Oh, I thought you were, I'm sorry, I thought you were gesturing to pass. Go ahead.
Yes, finally, we got the right people in here, and, you know, I'm happy we're looking at moving forward, but here's my problem. See, the structural problem that the Lasers Board has put the city in, and that's what needs to be addressed because what's to stop them running off with all the money again and making the financial crisis even worse? Because that's the problem here. If we didn't have to pay $660 million to the pension, for the pension payments this year, there wouldn't be a budget crisis. So what I'm getting at is we need to find a way to separate the taxpayers from these pension boards because they ran off with all the money and invested into things like downtown, the Ritz Carlton, the Marriott. It's a nightmare. That's a billion-dollar skyscraper testimony to greed and all the bad things about development downtown and the campaign contributions, and the mayor should be in here dealing with how we separate ourselves from these disastrous pension funds. Look, it's in the report for over here. Many corporations have gone bankrupt because of their pension funds. They're lavish, and you've got all this red tape, like the DWP. You've got all this red tape to go through. Nobody really knows who's doing what. They hand over all the money, and now it's all gone. That's the bottom line. So who cares what we're doing? You're like, oh, so let's change the way we contribute and the plans and everything. No. Chapter nine, let's separate the city of Los Angeles, however it goes down, secession into the valley, however you want to get out of it, it's a never-ending hole, and it doesn't matter what you do as far as contributions. They're not going to cover the $600 million hole you put us in.
Elizabeth Ralston?
Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. I'm Elizabeth Ralston, and I also represent the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. Both the city and the employees make contributions to the pension system, but sometimes people aren't aware that more than three-quarters of the income of the pension systems comes from return on the invested assets. If the return on investment is less than has been projected, then it's the city that ends up making, has to make up the difference, and that's the problem that the city faces today in the wake of the recent financial crisis. The League believes that given the city's financial constraints, it's appropriate for employees to increase their contribution as well when investment returns lag behind projections. This is already done for Fire and Police pensions. The League supports that this should be a policy for Lasers as well, for civilian employees. Going forward, it's important for the city to consider whether the current assumptions for rate of return on investment for the pension systems are realistic. The impact on the city's budget is actually enormous if they are not. For example, suppose that the actual rate of return that can be expected long-term for Fire and Police and Lasers is 7.5 percent instead of 8 percent. The city would then need to contribute an additional half of a percent a year of the system's liability in order to keep the system stable. Right now, that amounts to about $150 million a year, and we know that other pension systems, for example, CalPERS, are looking at their rate of return assumptions. I suggest, we argue that, and support the idea, that as you consider a pension reform, you ask for analysis that looks into the effective rate of return assumptions on the long-term stability of the systems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Pat McCosker?
Morning, council members. Pat McCosker, President, United Firefighters of Los Angeles City. Understand why in these economic times, people would be looking at pensions real hard. They should be looked at right now, and it's a conversation that we want to have. As you know, we've asked to meet and confer over this, and we have a right to meet and confer with the employer before they move forward on pension changes for our employees. It's a conversation we want to have in a collaborative way, though, and we don't think that this way of going about it is the right way of putting forward the League of Women Voters recommendations as a starting point. League of Women Voters is a fine organization. It's a great political advocacy organization. They don't have any particular expertise in pensions or city budgeting, but they have endorsed this. Now, it's not surprising to me that their recommendations read like a wish list for the employer on rolling back pension benefits for cops and firefighters and other city workers because it was actually a deputy CAO that sat on the panel of the League of Women Voters and wrote this and got the endorsement of this organization. But I would ask you not to politicize our pensions this way, not to now ask the staffs of the pension systems to weigh in that way and to endorse, really, these recommendations. Let's don't have this be the starting point. Let's talk about what the real problems are. The last speaker just talked about the fact that when the investments go down, the city has to pay in more. She forgot to mention, by the way, though, that when the investments are riding high like they did for many, many years, the city takes a holiday on its payments. We say that the number-one reform ought to be the employer doing the same thing that we do. We pay 9 percent out of every paycheck, every single two weeks, into the pension system. The employer ought to be paying in a steady fixed amount as well into the pension system. Then we wouldn't be having this discussion. When the Wall Street crooks, you know, caused this problem, they also caused the problem with pensions. It's not a problem of benefits. You didn't change the benefits from last year to this year for your cops and firefighters and others. The only thing that happened is the Wall Street investments went down, and so that's really the thing that ought to be addressed, and we urge you not to make this the starting point in your discussions with us. Thank you.
Lee Kevler? Lee Kevler? Lee Kevler, are you here, sir? Your turn.
Thank you very much for having me up here. I represent the Los Angeles Retired Fire and Police Association, and one of the things I noticed in the letter, initial letter from the League of Women Voters was they recommended a defined benefit program of pensions for sworn personnel with a defined contribution for the city employees. But in a subsequent report later on, they recommended a defined contribution pension for most members in the city plans. We're really opposed to this particular factor because we feel it would be unfair to hire a bunch of young people and have them out there, be fire police, and be possibly shot or hurt at a fire, or even our ambulance crews get some real serious disease like MRSA staph infection or one of these things, and be placed on a defined contribution pension with a few years on the job and try to survive on that for the rest of their lives. We think that's a pretty unfair approach. One other thing is we're opposed to just negotiating contracts. I know the city can just go in and say what they want and do that, but they should confer with the active members on the job that are going to be doing these things in the future. And the last time the city decided to do something on their own was 1981. They ended up losing a lawsuit in court and took 25 years to pay back the pension funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
I have, before you folks jump up and scream, I don't have any other cards for number two.
Number two, we're just on number two.
Number two, number two, not, wait, 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 wait.
Number seven-
Hold on a second. They've got a card that's in number one. Chris Fleg?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they had you in number one file, I'm sorry, instead of number two file. So you're the last speaker on number two. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Honorable council members, thank you for hearing this subject. Mr. Labange, I'd like to commend you for misunderstanding we had the other day. It was reported to me by a colleague that you waited for two hours in line for your dog license the other day, and I want to commend you on that because as a council member, your time is very precious. You could simply have gone down and-
I think the president is listening. I'm at it at 8:05 on the morning. I didn't have to wait for anything. Just go to your local animal shelter and pay your licenses if it's dober due.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Talk about pensions right now, not dog licenses.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Weisart, Councilmember Parks. Thank you for holding the Budget and Finance Committee meeting Monday. We learned a great deal about that. We learned that this is not necessarily a knee-jerk type of activity we want to jump into. We want to go about this systematically, and this is not systematic if we're not going to involve labor in the discussion. The CAO would have you believe that this is economical, but it's not necessarily economical. We need to look at the brass tacks. We haven't looked at the risk, actually, of having a defined contribution plan. What the defined contribution plan will do for you is make a heyday for the investment counselors, not for the people. Warren Buffett will be the number-one person to tell you, this is not good for the economy, it's not good for the markets, it introduces untold uncertainty, untold risk. It's not good planning. If you want good planning, then let's put the shell game where it belongs. Take some of the mayor's staff, put it in the Personnel Department to get the ERIP completed. Make reasonable adjustments. Let's not jump- Let's not jump to a decision hastily. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. And I know we're going to take up more on item number seven. I just wanted to rise on number two to address the report that's before us. Let me thank our public speakers and the League of Women Voters for getting this conversation moving and rolling. And I think it's a very important one. It's one that we've simultaneously and in parallel track sought to get going as well. And time is of the essence on this. About 12% of the nation's workforce right now is part of a state or local public pension. It's about 15 million people. Further, 7 million or so are retirees who are deriving benefits from it. That represents about $2.5 trillion of our economy and $165 billion each year that goes out in paychecks, of which about $30 billion is put in by employees and about $70 billion with employers. You can see that gap between what's being put in and what's being taken out right now. Part of that is the downturn in the market, et cetera. I was part of a panel of folks at the National League of Cities with Keith Brainard, who heads up the state associations of pension systems. He's somebody who's probably one of the top experts. And I want to thank Sally because she gave me a great presentation from Lasers that I was able to be on that panel. And it was one of the most vibrant conversations I've had with our peers about our pensions. There's no question that right now pension reform is probably the most pressing medium-term issue that we have here in the city. Public employees, just as a side note, are more likely to be older than our average employees. And 90% of public employees have a defined benefit plan versus in the private sector. It's about 2/3 of folks who are in a defined contribution. A quarter of those don't participate. Less than 20% have a defined benefit in the private sector. And of those that have a defined benefit from the public sector, they're twice as likely to have a college degree. Many more are involved in jobs that have physical risk involved, and most of them are career-oriented jobs in a specific profession as opposed to in the private sector where people go between being, say, a secretary here and a secretary there, even though, of course, we have all sorts of jobs here. They've been important over time because of a couple of reasons. One is to retain a good workforce. And traditionally, we had lower pay and better benefits. That was one of the things that attracted people to public service. While we've seen the private sector, the pay go down. To me, I don't want to be part of a race to the bottom where we say, well, now our pay is a little bit more similar to where the private sector is. Let's get rid of the benefits, too. That seems to be a race to the bottom of our economy. We should be challenging the opposite forces to kind of come up to some degree. And in 2001... Sorry. And the last thing is it also helped us to help people stay on the job so that they were retained for a longer period of time and retired at a more appropriate age. In 2001, pension plans in the country were above 100% funded. They don't need to be, and it's a common misconception. They don't need to be funded at 100% to be funded well because of the growth of the economy. Traditionally, if you're somewhere between 80 and 100%, you're in good shape. We're down to about 85% nationally right now, mostly because of the drop in the economy and the job market. I think one of the things that I took away from the panel that I did, and there's many good recommendations that the League addresses, and with my time, I don't have time to address them all, I'll do them on number seven, but moving from a defined benefit to defined contribution was something that this person who oversees state pensions and certainly didn't have a political bone in his body said was financially bad for cities and states to do, for the governments. It sounds attractive, and certainly people coming from the private sector say, oh, let's just do a defined contribution. But it undermines the fiscal strength as well as the workforce strength that we have. So I would tend to disagree with that one recommendation or one suggestion that we look at. I think we all know that the main things we're going to have to be doing right now are looking at different increased contributions from employees, going to be looking at our health care costs, we're going to have to be looking at the rate of return assumptions that we have. I do agree with that, that I don't think it's as radical as some people who've come before us and said that we've been off by 50%, but we do probably have to shave off some of those, and there's a lot of that happening. But with that, I just wanted to stand up very strongly for, I think, the strength of a defined benefit has been something that has redounded not just on the workforce that we've had, but also on the fiscal strength and predictability. For us not to have predictability and to have the sort of... I was talking to Steve Lopez yesterday. I know he wrote a column on the budget situation we're in. He said, I wouldn't tell the coalition that they should go to a defined contribution because at LA Times, we used to have a defined benefit, then we went to a defined contribution. Now we're hoping we're going to have anything left in the account in our 401Ks when we retire. That doesn't make for a good economy. That doesn't make for a good workforce. Our challenge is to work together with the unions and the League of Women Voters and other folks from the business community who have been interested to find the reforms that will put us on the path to a longer-term sustainability, not to get the system we have altogether.
Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, I'm going to speak on number seven. That's the one that we put...
Well, on number two, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, but just on number two. I just want to thank the League for its historic work on this. The more the League involves itself in issues and shines light on it, the more the dialogue is healthier. We all need to educate and inform ourselves. One of the problems today is the media, and the media does not... The newspapers do, but television is all soundbite. Radio sometimes does if they give you a longer piece. But to empower the people to understand the issues and to be able to work in a democracy is a critical part of making a democracy work. And the fact that the League does that is a great asset to all of us, and I just want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, followed by Mr. Corretts.
I still have a question, Sally, on this issue here. You would like, you were coming to us to give us options right now. Is that correct? How would you define your...
I would say that I'm giving you insights or helping you understand the impacts of those options.
Right. And one of the most important things you did say as far as if we define the future, to understand what we would want to have for those who choose to apply for a job with the city of Los Angeles and commit a career with the city of Los Angeles. That was a very important point that you made. I think for us to be successful, we must have everybody around the table. And I don't know how, because this is moving very fast and how big a table it is, but everybody should be around the table. It does happen fast. It was 1976, which I was standing behind Mr. Rosendahl because Mrs. Stevenson sat there, who was the councilwoman when I was a council aide. In 1976, it comes fast to 2010. Do you look at different things as far as retirement age? What are you looking at right now?
So the things that you'd have to consider would be, if you're hiring, what kind of people you're trying to hire? Because the retirement benefit is one of the compensation benefits that a new employee, a potential employee would look at, and they would look at that in comparison to what other employers are offering at the same time. So you want to look at it in the context of total compensation, but more importantly, if you're going to have a later retirement age, that means people are going to work longer, or you're incentivizing it for people to work longer if you have a benefit factor that's more attractive later years in life. So it would have an impact on your workforce in terms of the demographics of what the people...
Well, if you took Los Angeles, San Jose, Sacramento, San Diego, which are the major cities, Long Beach of the state, how do we stack up as far as, have we looked at this issue to other entities?
In terms of benefit structure, we're pretty comparable to what's been offered by other public agencies. Your probably closest employer would be LA County, La Sera. So they have, I think, maybe five or six different plans. Plan D and E is probably the most current ones. So in one regard, they are less attractive, but they are more attractive in later years in service or at a higher age. So our benefits are pretty comparable. It's not the most generous benefit that you see out there. So I...
But is it not for... Now, how does it... That was governments, states. How does it look for those, let's say, in the movie industry, let's say, that are in the South Bay and what is left of the aviation...
I wouldn't have... That I don't know. I don't know how we compare.
The one thing in the discussion that I've heard from people, that they say they do not want to see us at a higher rate than what the general populace is.
What I can comment on with respect to private sector, unlike most private companies and some other public entities, we do not have social security benefits. The defined benefit plan that we have for all employees is the only retirement benefit that they get. The other supplement would be your 457, your deferred comp, which is voluntary, and the employee puts into that themselves.
Historically, why did municipal employees of this city not have, or California, what to extent is that, doesn't have social security? What was that decision? What caused us not to have social security?
Mary may be able to comment a little bit. She has a little history on the social security.
Originally, none of the public sector was included under social security.
Say it again. And it's easier for you to speak into the mic, not that I wouldn't want to see you, but if you speak right there.
Originally, my understanding is that none of the public sector was included under social security. Then public sector involvement was allowed, but it was optional on the part of the public entity.
And that's from 1932, from Roosevelt time?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
From the development of social security.
And it was only fairly recently that all public, new public entities were required to come under social security. And about every five to seven years, there's a push to bring all of the public sector under social security. But it was a choice made at the time, and I'm not sure at what time, at what point the city made it.
We should see what that choice is because, as I think some of the public speakers mentioned, there's a wave of good times and bad times in the issue of the world economy that affects the United States economy that has affected us now. But at the same time, we should see what the reasons are there. But absolutely, the table should be as big as possible, and you have to do sidetracks of our current crisis that we face now, but a potential future crisis of how we look at the world and governance and what we could do to benefit those who choose public service to the people of Los Angeles. We've got to remember that.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Your time is up. Our next speaker is Mr. Corretts, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
I know we want to look at all the options in terms of dealing with our pension system and reforming it. The one option I would question even spending any time looking at would be the defined contribution option. As far as I can tell, it's often very harmful to employees, sometimes leaving them with little or nothing at the end of the process. It's also harmful to the existing pension systems, and I don't see any way that at the end of the day, we wind up doing this. So rather than wasting a lot of time and effort on it, I would encourage us to direct folks to look at the rest of the League of Women Voters suggestions, but to not spend a lot of time looking at something that doing is almost inconceivable because it's a lose-lose situation for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Garcetti, our final speaker on the matter.
Thank you. Can I ask the CAO to come forward? Mr. Santana or one of your representatives, if you don't mind coming forward. So now that we get kind of, we're now looking at what direction to give to the CAO, and we appreciate our pension fund managers that are here and the great job that they do. I know we've looked at some things like what sort of pooled administrative resources we might have between you. We'd ask you all to continue to look at that. But just a couple of things, and maybe Tom will know the specific numbers, but I think what's going to be important for us to do, colleagues, is to define some parameters. You know, Mr. Weston asked, what are we... He said, are we voting on something today? And I said, well, you know, we are voting on what we define today. We're not going to be voting on a new plan. That's something we do collaboratively. That's something we have to do by law and, I think, by instinct with our employees. That's something that is as much in employees' interests as it is in ours. In fact, when some folks asked about why the DWP raise went forward, DWP Union actually looked at a base salary increase this year and took it as a cash, non-pensionable raise, which actually helps keep their pension more fluid. That was a creative thing that a union brought forward that actually helps the health of their pension fund. But where are we right now? Let's just establish, we've said it before here, but where have we gone the last, let's say, three years in ballpark amounts in terms of our general fund contributions to our pensions? It's gone both in percentage and absolute dollar terms. How much have we gone up?
Okay, so for fiscal year '09-'10, for Lasers, the employer contribution rate will be 19.46%. So that'll be $298 million. We're projecting '10-'11 at 21.99% for $315 million.
Where were we a couple of years ago, if you can ballpark it? I know you may not have the exact numbers, but we were well below $298 million, were we not at the general fund?
We've been below $298 million, but in terms of the actual percentage, the actual percentage declined. I think the low actually was the 19.46, and we had been as high as 22, 23.
So essentially, we're adding... Do you remember how low the absolute dollar one was a few years ago? Was it below $200 million?
Well, it's been below $200 million by virtue of, it's a percentage of wage growth. So as the workforce grows, you have to contribute more towards retirement. And as the price of the workforce increases through cost of living increases, the dollar amount escalates as well.
If I may clarify, you have to look at two factors. Both the contribution rate, that's the bill that we send the city. So that's applied to whatever your payroll is. So even if you had a constant, a flat contribution rate, if your payroll grows, your contribution amount is going to grow each year by the increase in the payroll.
And that piece is fair. That's not above and beyond. That's what we do, that eyes wide open when we give raises as opposed to changes in the...
But in terms of the lowest that the cities contributed as a percentage of pay in, back in the, you know, the good days, as you had mentioned, the contribution rate was as low as 4% of pay.
Okay.
And then now it's at above 20% of pay.
So we've gone from a low of 4% of pay to 20% of pay. So we've defined as a council, in our budget process, Mr. Parks and others, when I sat on the Budget Committee, a number of targets that are for very important parts of our budget. For instance, the reserve fund, we said, should be 5% of our general fund. And that's the goal that we're still reaching towards, even in tough years, to rebuild up to 5%. One thing I don't think we've had in terms of our pensions, though, is what percentage should we be contributing for a healthy budget? And so I'm not asking you to answer that today, but I would make that an instruction, colleagues, because I think this is a critical part of our budgeting process for us to come back. But we need to have that as part of our policy. What is a healthy percentage of our general fund that needs, as a general percentage, that needs to be contributed over time, on average, to our pensions? And then for this year, if we define that, how far are we off of that? And how, what sort of reductions would we have to do on the pension side, you know, over a five-year, let's say, smoothing, because we can't just pick one year and put it all on there, over a five-year smoothing, to then have that percentage, to hit that percentage over a five-year horizon? We have a three-year budget plan, colleagues. The CAO has put that forward, but this is as critical as that. And so if I could instruct that to be part of what we direct the CAO to come back, I think that's the most useful thing in these budgetary discussions we've had, whether it's been debt, let's pick a realistic number, whether it's been our stimulus dollars, let's pick a realistic number, whether it's reducing our contracts, let's pick a realistic number. Well, it's time to do that for pensions, too. And I think it will help our unions to know what that number is. The unions, I encourage, to do the same thing. The League of Women Voters as well. We'd love to have those sorts of suggestions from folks. What should a healthy contribution percentage be of our city's general fund? And then we can try to say, well, if we're off by this much, what are the policies that would get us back in line? Thank you.
We can certainly work on that. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Alacan, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Members, I think we have limited access to the decisions at the pension systems. And they are coming to us with a series of recommendations, undoubtedly to try and reduce the impact on our budget. But at the same time, I hope that we recognize the leverage that we have to do some of the things we've wanted them to do that they haven't done. For example, I want them to do a better job of investing locally and making sure that the dollars circulate in our budget. They have about $18 billion of investment, not just the city, but the fire and pension, the DWP. They have about $18 billion that they don't invest necessarily in our community in a consistent, standardized basis. Like we just voted to create standards for deposits that we make in banks that they have to reinvest locally. And that ordinance will be coming back in about a month. And I believe that we should ensure that our pension systems have the same kind of sort of community reinvestment standards incorporated into their process to ensure that the people of Los Angeles are benefiting as well. Similarly, the issue of smoothing, this council has taken action to ask the pension systems to extend their smoothing years. They've maintained them at five years, although there was one change of 15 years for a temporary deal, but the smoothing has remained at five years. Why? I don't think we should do anything unless they are willing to extend that to at least 10 years, which would reduce the volatility in the market and reduce the amount that we would have to pay. It would not affect the benefits contribution whatsoever. But what it would do is say, it wouldn't put the city on the hook in any one given year for a massive amount of money. It would spread that over time and reduce the hit greatly when the hit comes. And so I understand the conversation, but I don't like the context. It's like they're holding us over the barrel to give them all these benefits to reduce their burden, but they're not doing some of the things that we think they ought to be doing, that they haven't been doing, and they've been getting hit on publicly. So number one, that we shouldn't do anything without them guaranteeing or implementing a smoothing policy that is much longer than five years. Number two, we should, we should ensure that they bring back standards to reinvest locally, because they're not reinvesting locally. They're sending billions of dollars outside of the city of Los Angeles that could be invested locally, and it could be invested in local banks versus national banks that are taking their community reinvestment elsewhere. Let's be smart here. Whatever we are discussing, this is a time of leverage. We have leverage over the systems that we haven't had before. If they want some of these things, then they better give us some of the things we've been asking them to do for years that they haven't done. And one, and in the major context I'm making is in the context of community reinvestment and reducing the single-year negative impact on our budget that we've seen in this current year. So I hope as we proceed, that we proceed very carefully. I'm skeptical about some of the rationale behind some of the elimination of these benefits, but no matter what we do, we absolutely should not diminish the leverage that we have to get them to do some of the things we've wanted them to do.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Santana, these discussions, when we talk about timing, and we're speaking now in phases, we don't know what the March report's going to look like yet. We're waiting for that. We've got the end of June for this fiscal year. Can you give me a sense of timing in terms of when do these discussions happen to come to a certain fruition or decision? Is this for next year? I just want to get a sense of how we move this discussion, or do we have a handle on that yet?
Well, we started this discussion early this calendar year, and I think that the conversation hasn't ended yet. And, you know, while we're in the middle of the budget season now, once we're having these discussions again, further direction from ERC, and then hopefully we'll be coming to your council with some further clarification on those directions sometime in the next couple of months. One thing that is important to be clear, though, is that, and if we get into any of those specifics, I recommend we bring it into closed session as opposed to discussing it publicly. But one thing that's important to clarify is that any, any major changes to our pension system really isn't going to provide a panacea immediately as it relates to, because we're limited to a significant extent making changes to our future employees, not our existing ones. And so even if we were to adopt a series of changes to future employees, and we would have our labor partners support them, we're not in a situation where we're hiring very aggressively in the next several years. And so we're really setting the foundation for changing some of these larger issues in the, in the future.
So our fiscal health right now is very weak, as we know, and so these decisions are not going to impact us immediately from our deficit side. It's really looking out to two, three, four years, and that's really the structural change that's being discussed.
Yes.
Okay. So when the unions are working with us and we're creating that dialogue, at what point are they at the table? Is this through ERC, or is this through another process that's being handled by the council leadership? Or is it just something that we wait and see? Who's making proposals to whom?
Well, we receive the labor instructions through the ERC. In January, we presented a version of those instructions, and we received some comments from this council. We're continuing that conversation with ERC, and again, we'll come back to the council for further clarification. And then once that's done, then we will be sitting down with our partners in labor to start hammering out these issues.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could our pension boards adopt a local investment policy?
The board members of all the pension systems are fiduciaries, and they have legal requirements that they have to follow. As a fiduciary of the trust, they have the exclusive authority of the investments or the management of those assets. That's in both the state charter, I mean, the state constitution, as well as the city charter. So our board members take that very, very seriously. Violating that trust would result in significant consequences for those trustees and staff. With that in mind, their sole and their primary duty is to the members. So it's to ensure that we have inadequate assets to pay the promised benefits that's agreed to or negotiated by the city. So that's, that's what drives all the investment decisions. So based on that, the board does everything within its discretion to maximize returns while minimizing risk. And in that context, we do look at what we call specialized investments, whether it be in terms of clean tech, green energy, local investments, all of that. We do look at that, but the primary outcome that we're looking for is maximizing returns. So so long as it meets that objective, we will continue to look at opportunities locally as well as other areas that also have other benefits besides the monetary benefits. So the board already has that kind of policy in our investment policies. We do have a portion of our assets that are dedicated to those types of opportunities.
Okay, so the answer to my question is, in some fashion, they have, and they can.
And have invested locally.
And then, but they can, in the sense that they could revisit that policy, like they review all of their investments and all of their policy guidelines as they choose to as a board, right? As they feel the necessity to, or as the question comes up by a board member, they can and do have those kinds of discussions, correct?
And they do continuously. And it happens with every investment decision that they make, because we're constantly looking at opportunities where we can maximize returns for the system, which will also reduce the city's contributions. So in that context, with our consultants and our investment staff, we're always looking at who are the best managers and where are the best opportunities? And in fact, if there's something that also benefits the local economy here, we'll take an even closer look and take advantage of those benefits. So we look at it continuously. It's part of our ongoing review of our investment portfolio.
Okay. So when was the last time they've changed or augmented that local investment policy?
So we revisited our investment policy for private equity just about a few months ago. We have about, we are, assets are about $9.5 billion, close to $10 billion. We have an asset allocation of about 7 percent. Actually, that's been increasing to 9 percent of our portfolio to private equity. A portion of that is dedicated to review or examine private equity investments in what we call LA-based or LA managers, or that have environmental impact, other types of specialized investments. So we recently looked at that. Our problem is, as the asset base has decreased, you only have so much that you can put into new investments. So we are limited to what's available in terms of new money to actually reinvest, because now, since we're not earning as much due to the decline and all the things that are improving in the public equity markets, you know, you have to then readjust, liquidate some assets, or in the cash contributions we get from the city, reinvest. So there are some limitations right now, where we haven't invested in more opportunities recently, but when we do see something that is worthwhile, we do make that investment.
So just to clarify for the listeners, new money isn't just dividends or interest earned or what have you, it's also new deposits. For example, every two weeks, money is getting taken out of the paycheck of the employees, and it gets sent over to the retirement funds. On top of that, for example, the city of Los Angeles from our general fund, we're sending how much gross amount to our funds approximately?
Approximately $370 million. That includes the bulk of that from the general fund, from the city, and then also from the harbor and airport. So we get that upfront and invest that money.
Thank you.
Mr. Alacan, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Yes, do you, how much do you have in deposits on average, any given day?
I'm sorry?
Deposits?
Deposits?
Yeah. In banks?
In the bank. Well, we only maintain about 1 percent of our total assets in cash. So about nine and a half? I can't do my decimals in my head. I'll give that number for you.
That worries me.
Well, we have professionals that manage your investments, and I have that number for you.
Can you give me that number? I really want it. Just give me a 1 percent. What's the total portfolio?
That's about 90 to 100 million.
Okay, so at any given time, you will have about $100 million invested in local banks, just deposited in local, in banks.
Actually, let me clarify that. No, not in local banks. We have a custodial bank.
Okay.
That's Northern Trust.
I got you.
We don't, we don't have deposits in local banks.
But you have 100 million. Do you have a community reinvestment standards policy?
No, we don't, do not, because that really doesn't apply in our business.
So you do not do an assessment, where you put those, where you put those deposits, you do not hold them to any standard of local reinvestment? So you don't know if they ripped off people of Los Angeles on foreclosures, and you don't know if they took the bailout money and didn't pass it on to small businesses in the form of loans? You just give them the money because they give you a higher interest rate?
Well, first of all, we don't give any of them money, because we don't have deposits in local banks. We don't have deposits in banks. We have with our custody, our custodial bank, who administers all of our assets, part of that cash is held by a custodian bank, but we don't have what you would see in the treasurer's office.
Okay, so a custodial bank, is that something that is competitive?
I'm sorry?
Is it competitive?
Oh, absolutely.
Do you hold them to those standards that I just mentioned?
It's a different standard. It's, the custodian banks don't issue mortgage securities. They don't, they're not involved in, they do not accept the TARP money that you're referring to. It's a different type of contract altogether.
Do they do any kind of investments?
They do short-term investments.
Do they invest locally?
No.
Do you hold them to any standard to invest locally?
No.
You just give them $100 million and say, we're cool?
It's not quite that simple, but we do hold them to the standards within our contract.
But you do not have any, only standards?
We don't hold them to the standards of the Community Reinvestment Act that you were requesting.
You don't have any social responsibility standards to invest locally with the city of Los Angeles?
They follow, they follow legal requirements as well as fiduciary requirements.
But that's not my question. That's not my question.
But you're asking, what standards do we hold them to?
It's a yes or no. Do you have social responsibility standards for the custodial bank that you put, that you put $100 million of city taxpayer money deposits in?
They're not deposits, but yes, you're correct. We do not hold them to those standards.
Is that something that is illegal to create social standards?
No, it is not.
Are those standards that are being contemplated by your group?
No, they aren't.
So why should we give you any of these things if you're not, if you're not reinvesting these monies and circulating them in our economy?
I'd like to clarify that. We're not here before you asking for anything. We were asked to comment on the recommendations by the League of Women Voters. Whether you make those adjustments or not, we're not here to advocate any change. We're just here to inform. So we're not here today asking this council for anything.
Okay. This councilman is asking you to create social responsibility standards for the people that you deposit your money in. I think you should have those same kinds of standards for the investments that you make. And 9 percent doesn't get close to what I think it should be in the city of Los Angeles.
If I may comment on that, if I can address it more broadly, the LACERS board and many other pension plans across the nation have adopted what's called the UN Principles of Social Responsible Investing. So those principles, again, driven by you've got to maximize returns while looking at these other social or economic benefits. So we do incorporate those principles, and we do share those with each of our managers. So to the extent that we can and meets our fiduciary responsibilities, yes.
I do know that there have been advances on that, and I commend the board for doing that. But I'd like to know what they are, and I'd like to see if they should be expanded. That's what I'm trying to get at. And I don't know, because I've never had, we've never had that presentation.
Actually, it is, it's included in that report that the CLA did with regard to investments in what they categorize as social investing. So we did provide that information to the city. That information is always provided through our board meetings, so it's...
All I'm trying to say, members, is as we are looking at these considerations, we should use the right lens to look at this issue, and that includes social responsibility standards of reinvestment into the city of Los Angeles, not just the government, but into the communities of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Alacan. I think they have the message on that. Mr. Reyes.
In the reports, do we have, I want to kind of follow this dialogue here a little bit more. In the reports, do we have a sense of who benefits from the funds? I know we benefit from a return, or we assume there's going to be a return, otherwise we wouldn't be making them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when we look at who else benefits from the funds that come from the city employees, can we get a picture of that? Is there a report we can look at?
I'm not sure I fully understand what you're...
In other words, the money is doing something, correct? The money's going somewhere.
Right.
Where is that place? Where, what's the destination of this money? Who benefits from it?
It's pretty widespread.
I'm sorry?
It's pretty widespread.
Pretty widespread.
Right, you mean, LA Fire and Police has about $12 billion, LACERS has about $9 billion, and I'm not sure what the current status of, 7 billion for DWP. And they are invested in accordance with our asset allocation policy.
Asset allocation policy, you said?
Asset alloc, yeah. Each system, each board develops an asset allocation strategy, and the idea behind that is to maximize return, minimize risk, and to diversify the portfolio to meet their fiduciary responsibilities. And those are looked at periodically. In LA Fire and Police's case, it's every three to five years, and we're about to undergo that. There are other overlaying factors, such as social responsibility policies that go into that. It's a very complex issue, but the question you're asking is not something, while it sounds, while it's a simple question, it's not a simple answer.
Okay, they say a picture's worth a thousand words, right? Is there a way to somehow reflect how or demonstrate how this money is benefiting certain interest groups, entities, industries? It's going somewhere. Is there a way to capture that?
We haven't done, you're asking for some type of economic analysis on the impacts it's had on the local economy or other investments that we've made. We don't have that type of information. There is a report that I believe CalPERS did, and they have the resources to do this kind of work. They did do some type of analysis, which I'd be happy to share with you, that gives somewhat of a picture, but bear in mind, they also have over $200 billion that they invest compared to, you know, ours.
Right, but in this day and age, when people are losing jobs and people are losing homes, we should know where our money is going. We should know what it's doing. We should know who's benefiting. That's a lot of money.
Well, again, just to reiterate, that the ultimate benefit of these funds is for the plan members to fund their retirements, and the responsibility of the boards is to do that. In addition to that, though, I think all of our boards recognize the need that these investments can have, the impact they can have on other people's lives. I know our personal board, you know, when they're looking at real estate investments, our portfolio does fund jobs in Los Angeles. It does fund jobs in California, and these are items that are brought to the attention of the board.
I think the, I almost call it frustration, I think the sense of urgency, if you will, is just to know what our money's doing. If there is that report that you speak of, an economic report, an economic impact report, you know, it lets us know how, the good job you're doing as administrators, and how it's moving.
Right.
And it has, as it goes through the process, it has an impact. And so when it has an impact, okay, what is it? How is it? I mean, in a very broad way, we know that many corporations from the United States are investing in other countries and taking jobs with them, and we're losing jobs here. The middle class is taking a beating. I mean, all that is part of this big picture, and we're playing a role in that.
We will look into what information we can provide. I believe we have some of that, so we'll make sure that we share that with you.
Yeah, I just want to give at least a thumbnail sketch. We should at least know what our money's doing. I think that's what's being asked.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labonge?
I just want one thing here. I think, Mr. Garcetti, I think it's real important that we have ITA or whomever be a wing of this council, so people who come before us, who give us information, could use that wing to put information up there so we could understand it. Many of the questions, I'm sure, is extremely available online somewhere, graphs, et cetera, so that we could understand it. And at one point, Mr. Parks, again, I ask you, because you have great experience with the city, the fiduciary responsibility of these folks is to get maximum return for whatever dollar it is. It's, it's not necessarily to do anything but that. Is that correct?
And while minimizing risk.
And by minimizing risk.
The reason that it's fed up with a commission and state law is to prevent interference in how they run the fund. The city's role is to provide them the contribution of employees and the contribution of the city, and then we see what their investment return is. As they will tell you, all three of them, no matter what you do and negotiations and how you do it, they can't come to you and say, "Don't do that." They can tell you the price of it when you're through. And so it's, we could ask them to take it to their board and look at ways in which they could have quote, uh, "community responsibility," but if their board views the conflicts with their ability to bring the biggest return on investment to their members, their members used to be city employees or no longer city employees, maybe living throughout the world. They're just looking to get a check the first of every month, and that's what they're, they're looking at. And they will not accept coming back and saying, "We lost so many millions of dollars because we went into a, a responsibility program that was inconsistent with their primary responsibility."
And did CalPERS have that problem this last year?
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that? I mean, they got really way out there. There was even some guidance, as Mr. Parks said, there is a commission that's separate from a political body that's supposed to deal with this strictly on those issues, and it's a variety of people who are not necessarily in a government, in a governance of an elected official, but that of an appointed official. So there's areas to be cautioned, but I think it's always good to see, out of what good do you come from, as you said, the responsibilities when you spoke of. I, I would certainly think we all should review those. But lastly, I absolutely think, because these are good discussions that we have, and I say this before, there used to be a city engineer. You had any problem in the city during council, you walked over and saw Bruce Rollo or any of the engineers, Gene McPherson, they would give you an answer. We need ITA council. It's 2010, so the people who come on this table could pop up information for not just us, but for the people who watch this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. That's our final speaker on this matter. Mr. Parks, any other comments on this? Number seven?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, number two.
This is one and two. And would you like to vote on one and two before taking up seven?
Move the item one, the Budget and Finance Committee report with the verbal amendments we made today, and then move item two, two, the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Away from a defined benefit to a defined contribution for one case for all quarters.
Uh, I have, I have two cards on number one. Yes? Mr. Parks, two cards on number one.
And then can I make one other verbal recommendation? And I'd like to add in number two, that we have a motion to incorporate Mr. Garcetti's statement that we ask the CIO to create a financial policy that addresses what a, a target for pension fund contributions annually.
And that is then to see how much out of skew we are and what would be a five-year plan to, to get to that target.
So we ask for that, CIO to create that, and we'll have the two cards, and then we can move both of those items.
Very well. The two speakers on this, Arnold Sachs, Matt Dowd. Arnold Sachs first, then Matt Dowd. And then we'll take up the vote on those items. Seven's not up yet, Mr. Rosenbaum. Arnold Sachs?
Could you restart my time, please, sir?
Okay, we will start your time over, sir.
Thank you.
Can we start the clock over, please?
Thank you. Um, but I heard a couple of things. First of all, um, police and fire charter reform, the LACERS amendment to the city charger, charter, and the DWP controlled by Board of Commissioners, a board and the commissioners. So there is no direct city control or city, uh, way of the city to amend the DWP pension. Additionally, the League of Women Voters, the speaker, said that the report didn't address the DWP pension. So leaving that out of the, the gate needs some questions, but that's up to you. And then Mr. Garcetti made a comment about a percentage of the general fund. How about a healthy percentage of the wage growth, which reflects on the amount of money that's contributed to the general fund? You don't have an idea what's a healthy percentage of wage growth is. You keep allocating funds and wage, and, and wage increases, but nobody's putting, nobody's putting a question of how much the city and the public can contribute to fund these wage increases, which turn around and reflect on the wage growth and the percentage that's contributed to the pension funds. The DWP is a proprietary department, but LALA and Harbor fall under the LACERS program. Why are they so different? It's all, they're all proprietary departments. Why don't you address those questions? The police and fire spokesperson said that they've had a disclosure, disclosure practice, but not a policy for several years. Why aren't the other pension funds having the same kind of practice, and why has it taken so long for these policies to be enacted?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Matt Dowd, our next speaker.
Yeah, I'll take another minute on this one. Now, let me tell you, let it put it this way, the, see, the LASA funds, you, these guys are just like the big banks in, in Wall Street, and the city is just like Obama. See, whatever they do, they, they know you're going to bail them out, just like the banks. Instead of taking the bailout money and doing the right thing, they went and invested it to make a quick buck because they're getting free money from the Fed. So you guys are giving these, basically, these guys free money, they lost it all, shady investments. The mayor is involved, he should be in here. It must be so frustrating for Tony Kardness and Richard Alakon when, when people like Tom Labonge, who don't even know anything about what's going on here and just want to reminisce about 20 years ago, oh my goodness, only in the City of Los Angeles, let me tell you, people, this item talks about pension updates for new hires, and yet the item next to it is 4,000 people getting fired. Only in the City of Los Angeles.
All right, that matter is now before us for a vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate. Hold on, Mr. Alakon has a question. We're voting right now.
Are we voting on one?
We're voting for one and two. Mr. Carruthers?
He wants to do them individually. Just do one, two.
All right, you want individual? Mr. Carruthers?
If I could ask two things, one, that we bifurcate one and two.
We will bifurcate one and two, separate votes.
And, and to make a substitute motion on two, that we remove consideration of defined contributions from our pension considerations.
Any objection to that? Second by Mr. Garcetti.
But otherwise, keep the same motion.
Mr. Parks?
I think we have to study it and say why the reasons we don't have it. Otherwise, I mean, the whole purpose is to give some substance as to why it's not good. If we don't ever develop our case, then we'll have people coming here daily saying, "Why don't you go in that direction?" So the whole issue is establish our case to determine why one is better than the other.
Justify one or the other. Mr. Garcetti?
Second to Mr. Carruthers' motion, I, I've stood up and said, by public, because I have done some of the research and work on it myself, and I, I just think that it isn't wise, but I, I don't have any problem with studying it to make that case. I think what's important for both folks on different sides of a lot of the budget issues that we're talking about, for instance, when, if Union comes forward with an idea, I think we need to always address that idea, put a real number on it. If an outside group, if the women voters or a chamber, somebody comes up with an idea, I think there is usefulness in, in addressing and, or dismissing it. I, I am confident where I think the study will go, talking to pension professionals around the country, but I second it because I think Mr. Carruthers can put that forward, but I don't have a problem with studying it either.
Well, we now have the matters. Mr. Alakon, do you have another question on this? We're going to vote separate, one and two. Where Mr. Carruthers does have the motion, it's been seconded by Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Parks responded to that. So we have item number one before us for a vote. Item number one. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Very well. Item number two.
And I'm sorry, a clarification on number two. Okay, you want to vote on the substitute.
On the substitute. And that substitute is from Mr. Carruthers on the removal. On that matter, open the roll. I know they're not working. Open the roll. Is it, it's not working.
Do an oral do.
Oral, okay, we'll do an oral roll call on it.
Mr. Alakon.
Hi.
Mr. Kardness.
No.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Weisler?
No.
Mr. Carruthers?
Yes.
Mr. Kukarian?
No.
Mr. Labonge?
No, thank you.
Mr. Parks?
No.
Ms. Perry?
No.
Mr. Reyes?
No.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wesson?
No.
Mr. Zine?
No.
Mr. Garcetti?
Second to five.
Okay, that fails.
All right, that matter fails. So number...
And then now the matter is before council.
Pardon me?
Now the matter is before council, item number two.
Okay, the matter is before us on number two. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Very well. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for being here. We just voted, Mr. Alakon. We voted on the amendment, and then we voted on the matter without the amendment. The amendment didn't pass.
Hey, hey, Greg. Say...
So it'll be 14 ayes and one no. Mr. Alakon has voted no on that matter. Okay, the next item, please.
Our next item is item number seven, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosenbaum, and there are cards as well on this item.
Would you like to hear the speakers first?
Yeah, I'd like to have a little discussion so we know what the speakers and I can all appreciate.
Sure.
Now, we have, uh, these are the department heads that are going to come here. We have the whole Public Works, all the bureau heads that are here, so maybe we could do that first, because this one's just a weekly report on, on some of the stuff, and I know there's some cards here, but I just, I think time-wise, we might want to dig in to the Public Works, but I'm, I'm amenable if folks want to...
Just a second on this. It's really combined with one and two. That was the whole point of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, on seven, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, let's, I meant after seven. We should probably go to Public Works then, before we do the other, the layoff update.
Number seven, come on back up. You know, it was the same discussion on pensions, but...
Mr. Rosenbaum, you want to hear from the city employees first? The city, you want to hear from the city folks first?
Right.
Okay. So if the city representatives will please come forward on number seven, then we will take the public speakers after that. And there are about five public speakers on number seven. Mr. Rosenbaum, you have the floor.
Yeah, you all thought you could leave, right? No, 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 number seven is just trying to flesh out, since I've been on this council, everybody has always mumbled to me, we have a structural deficit councilman. I've always asked, what is the structural deficit? I get a mumble back, and now we're at a point in time where we have to clearly understand what we're talking about. We're talking about the pension system as it is, and where do we go from here? I obviously respect the sacred contracts that have been created. I obviously respect contract law and state issues. So there's no politics with me on this. We've talked about a two-tiered system as a potential way of dealing with it, and we've also talked about existing employees with the present pension. And these motions were to get that fleshed-out clarity. So could we hear from staff what those motions meant to you and what insight you can give us?
Um, let me just, Sally Chor again, let me just start off by saying that the, some of the problems that the city's budget is facing, the sole source of that problem is not the pension system.
Correct.
We are contributing part of it, but it's not the main reason why you're in the, in the predic...
What are the main reasons, besides not getting the money in a recession from the state?
Right, which has the same kind of impact on our, on our portfolios, which fund most of our benefits. So it's really the markets that have impacted us, and it's having a, um, impact to the city because of the liability stream, you know, your, your liabilities growing, and it's ongoing.
Right.
But it is not the sole cause of the budgetary problems.
Yeah, the budgetary problems, besides the state and the recession, are health benefits and the cost of health benefits plus the pensions. Right.
So I believe with, with regard to some of the motions, in terms of looking at the different types of benefits, again, we go back to kind of the factors that affect the cost of benefits. That would be your final compensation, your age of retirement, your benefit factor, your cost of living adjustments, the employee contribution rates, whether or not you're providing a retiree health benefit, and if, if employees are paying into, to fund that benefit, those are the primary areas you would look at. But more importantly, we have to start off with, is what is it that you're trying to achieve? What is the objective in looking at a new benefit tier? If it's solely for the reason of reducing costs, then all those things, if you reduce it from where we are now, it will result in lower cost.
Right.
Um, so first, you know, kind of, you know what the factors are, and then you have to define what it is that you want the outcome to be. And because the retirement age is going to have an impact on the workforce that you're going to, you're going to have, just to give you an idea, right now, people are aged 60 on average when they retire. On average, employees have about 26 and a half years of service when they retire, and these are all pre-early ERIP numbers. So that's kind of the, you know, what we see year after year based on the actual experience.
Right.
Um, and then also, I think the active age of members right now is about 46. The average years of service of our active members is about 10.2 years. So that kind of gives you an idea of what kind of workforce you have now, and then you want to think about what kind of workforce you want to have in the future, especially if you're not hiring with, with the managed hiring and, and the limitations you put with the ERIP. So, you know, you need that information to then determine how you want to, you know, go from there. And then I would suggest that as you look at those different areas that I mentioned, the different factors, you'd want the actuary to price out each of those things and to tell you how much of a cost savings it would produce.
Right. So when you hear a constituent say to me a thousand times in the last year and a half or so, "Councilman..." I'm sorry? Well, maybe that's an exaggeration, hyperbole. You're right, Richard. It's a little over the top. But the bottom line is, a lot of people have said, councilman, um, we don't wanna bail out, um, you know, we're suffering ourselves, the pensions and healthcare benefits, um, that the city, with our tax dollars, continues to support. I explain back to them that these are relationships through contracts with a history and a commitment from the city. There is a problem, though. How do we answer that question going forward?
I think what you could say is that while you have limitations of what you can do with the existing benefit structure for employees that are already, you know, accrued those benefits and are entitled to it, based on, like you said, the contracts that they have, but where you can have impact is on looking at new benefits, and that would address or minimize your future liabilities. The current liabilities are not going to go away. They are what they are, and it's just working with us in terms of how, when you pay those, pay those down. That's through their contributions we make, and it's through the, um, different policies that our boards adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
So I think that's the late answer.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. Sally, one question you didn't answer is, how long do they live after they retire?
On average, the life expectancy is about twenty years after retirement.
Uh, there's no other speakers on the queue on this matter, so we will go to public Mr. Parks, you didn't press his button. Mr. Parks, do you wish to speak on this? No, he does not wish to speak on this. Okay, very well. John Walsh, number seven, sir. John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sachs.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We've covered this, uh, past months, a few months ago. Andrew Cuomo of New York started the placement gate scandal investigation. One of the people who was caught started singing, and when he started singing, he started talking about placement agents here in Los Angeles. You were able to kill the investigation through Brown. It's all on the website, HollywoodHighlands.org. Placement agents can put hundreds of millions of dollars in people's pockets. It is the most corrupt system in America. Not here, New York. You're not, you don't hold a candle to New York. I am, I wanna thank my brother. I'm a, a candidate for a pension at, at LAUSD. I'm not receiving it yet. Lady, he said it, and he said it right. The League of Women Voters, shame on you. This isn't your mother's League of Women Voters. It isn't your grandmother's League of Women Voters. In fact, it doesn't even have a woman as president anymore. How politically correct can you get? And I'm telling you what they got up and said, that working people should take it. They have a CEO on their board, that these are rich, white people, and let's face it, who are these pensioners? More and more, they're minorities. And I wanna say that the League of Women Voters is racist. Look at them with their expensive clothes and their smug faces. And I'm telling you right now, we, the people, go back to the West Side where you belong, HollywoodHighlands.com. Minorities, people who work here, don't— And, look at this guy. Look at this guy. I'm finished.
Mr. Lavange.
Get down on their knees in front of them.
Mr. Lavange.
Mr. President, we should welcome all public speakers at the desk to address us and not turn to those who are guests here and, and question any of their motives or where they're from or who they are.
I agree, Mr. Lavange.
And if you're sitting there as president, I ask you—
Mr. Lavange, this is a, this is a public meeting, and public comments are welcome. A card was filled out. It was public comment on this matter, and oftentimes, this council is criticized under public comment. Everyone has a right for free speech, and this is an example of free speech. We appreciate the legal and women voters to be here.
Free speech, too.
Apologize for whatever may have offended you.
I don't know if anyone's offended, Mr. Lavange. Sometimes it comes with the territory. Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, Rosendahl hit it right on the head. He mentioned pensions and healthcare benefits. And I've yet to see any of the discussions in open session regarding healthcare benefits, because what will that affect? How does that affect? Maybe you would have seen yesterday's newspaper, recession reaches Vernon. Vernon, with a healthy budget, eliminated health and life insurance coverage for the spouses and children of city workers. All of them, they're paying their city council members sixty-eight thousand dollars. They're paying their city manager three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. The average fireman gets a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars in Vernon, and they're eliminating healthcare coverage for their spouses and workers. When do we address that for the public? Who sits here and says, how much can the public keep getting dinged and, and danged and beaten over to, to pay for these benefits and costs that are approved by the council? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take one minute, just a couple of comments that, uh, you know, the first one, it strikes me as somewhat of a conflict of interest right here now. Bernie Parks gets two pensions right here. He's got his police pension, and he gets a city pension. And there's rumor, there's a cash pension under the floorboards, that that's just what I hear. I'm loving it, every day. I, I will be a martyr for the cause. You know, God's on my side, remember that. And I'm happy to say that on Channel thirty-five, in public. See, it's the shadiness that went down with Jan Perry downtown. AEG is finished. Forget revenue from them. They're over with. Morello Maddox, they floated on Wall Street at two-seventy-five, and their shares are like two cents today. It's over. Don't pay any more money to these people.
Pat McCosker.
Don't interrupt the public comment. That's a disruption. Right through out.
Mr. McCosker.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I have thirty years on our fire department now. Back when I had two years in the fire department, in a, a much lesser budgetary downturn and, and with cynical, I think, city leaders at the time, they changed pensions for firefighters and police officers. They dumbed down the benefits. Wasn't too long after that that we had a woman, a young woman on the job, fall almost a hundred feet from a ladder at a training exercise, and was permanently crippled when she hit the concrete. Because we had dumbed down pensions, because we had two tiers of pensions that had just been created, she was not entitled to a disability pension. She lives to this day crippled without a disability pension because we created a second tier for employees. So I just urge you to work with us before you ask people to work alongside one another with different levels of benefits. You can't ask people to run into a burning building together and take on all the other risks that we take, and have them, one gonna get a particular level of benefit for their surviving spouse, and the other get a lesser benefit, or for themselves, if they're, if they're lucky enough to live. It's just not right. It's divisive, it's difficult, it creates all kinds of problems in the workforce. Please work with us before you create a second tier of dumbed-down pensions for any of your employees in this city. We've got ideas that will save you the money. I completely support. I was the first to be in support of the idea that we ought to smooth out the payment, the city's contribution, you know, more into pensions. That's the kind of thing that needs to be done before we just look at the recommendations that were really written by the CIO's office for the League of Women Voters and dumbed down our pensions for your employees. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, final public speakers on this, and thank you, legal and women voters, for putting your names on one card so you save paper for us instead of three cards. Uh, we have all three of you listed. If you wish to go first, sir, or have your colleagues with you?
No, no, thank you. That speaker card was really a, just in case item number two wasn't reopened, so—
There you go.
Um, but, and now the opportunity to respond to one thing that one of the other commentators said.
Identify Mr. Holtzman.
Oh, so I'm David Holtzman, and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters, and I am indeed the first male president of the League, of the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles in its about ninety-year history. And the, the question was raised about whether or not it is your grandmother's League of Women Voters, and my grandmother actually was a suffragist back in the day, fighting for the right of women to have the franchise and vote. So a lot of what I do as the president of the League of Women Voters is out of respect for my grandmother, so in a sense, this is at least my grandmother's League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our, our last card. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker. Mr. Cardenas?
No.
Oh, okay. Mr. Alakon?
I know. I can—
Mr. Alakon, did you wanna speak on this?
I did fight for Social Security.
Mr. Alakon, did you wanna speak?
What?
I have you on the queue.
Oh. Well, I, Mr. McCosker, we were, I was, I was making some facetious comment about what Mr. McCosker was saying, but it's a very scary deal when you have younger firefighters with potentially different benefits than older firefighters, and we were saying, wait a minute, does that mean the older guy's gonna have to run in the burning, burning building and not the younger guy? And, and, and that's a scary thought, but that's, that's the reality of the decisions that we are making. And, and when you get out in, in the street, uh, and all kinds of psychology is at play in a, in a dramatic circumstance, you have to realize the impact of the decisions you're making as a council member could have an impact on the quality of service out in the field. So I, I thank Mr. McCosker for reminding us of that sad piece of history, because we don't wanna replicate it in a, in a grandiose manner. Uh, and, and I think it's a, a very dangerous prospect. I, I, I also had a question for the president of the Women's League of Voters, and I'll bet your, your grandmother fought for Social Security, too. And, uh, and, uh, and you're moving in quite a different direction now, and so we give, you know, if we wanna be consistent, let's be consistent. Uh, I, I applaud you for your leadership, uh, at the League of Women Voters. Uh, at the same time, I would say that, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the substance of the policy, uh, more than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, and I wanna comment on this for the benefit of our workforce, both police and fire. I've spent forty-two years with the Los Angeles Police Department. I have a son who's a police officer. When you go on the police department or fire department or employment with the city, you're not looking at pension, you're not looking at retirement, you're looking to earn a paycheck and hopefully supporting your family. Uh, there are many pension systems available. I know there's a defined benefit, a defined contribution. I think what's happened with people who get in one system or another, they're forced into one aspect. Our system is done welfare retirees. When I came on, there was one pension system back in nineteen-sixty-eight. It's changed a few times. It's now gonna change back, but when we hire people, we hire people to do a job in public safety, public service. To me, it's like Mr. Lavange has forty-some years with the city of Los Angeles, it's a thing for doing for the community, for the people of the city. So when a firefighter goes in a burning building, and I've seen that many times, they're heroes, uh, they have them working side by side, the same thing with our police officers, but the economic situation that we're facing obviously has to make some change for the future. It doesn't impact the current employees. Some people wish the pensions would be destroyed, but when you look at what people enter into in the public safety arena, they're not just stopping by. Hopefully, they attract to a city, or a county, or government work for a career. And I know that the pension benefits have been criticized for a long, long time, but the fact of the matter is, that's one of the benefits, and that's why some people choose to go into public service, and I'm proud of the people who work for the city of Los Angeles. I'm proud of my career of forty-two years of service with the city of Los Angeles. Ms. Hahn's dad, many, many years with the city and with the county. There's certain people that are called to that profession, and while we need to monitor it, I'm sure we'll make some modifications, but the bottom line is, people join government service to serve people, and whether it's the Department of Sanitation, or the police, or the fire service, or some of the other services we provide, it's for the benefit of the public. I wanna commend the folks here who control those, and I understand that the benefit for the retirees has to be guaranteed, and the governing board has to make sure that those investments don't go down the wrong track. They have to make sure those investments are wise, and that's their first primary responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, to make sure that they don't lose money. So I know that it's, it's a challenging task at times. I know the police and fire is at ninety-one percent, and the laser system is not as high, CalPERS, et cetera, but the bottom line with pensions, if we start tweaking it to a certain degree, that's satisfactory, but if we wipe out pensions, I think we're gonna wipe out a major part of the people who dedicated to public service for the people of the community. And again, congratulations to the fire department for the great work you do.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to get one point clarified on fire police. I think you mentioned in your earlier presentation that you administer six or seven different programs. Now, how did that come about?
Uh, we have six tiers, two of which are closed. One is, um, sorry, Floriduglam from Fire Police Pensions. We have six different tiers, two of which are closed, which means we have no more active members, we only pay beneficiaries and retired members. Um, and those have changed via changes to the city charter, so there has been a will of the city leadership to put a ballot measure on the ballot, and there's been a will of the people to vote for changes, either increases in benefits or decreases in benefits over the years.
And so employees historically have worked side by side and had different pension systems, depending on when they were hired?
That's true. That doesn't mean that there aren't problems with that approach.
Yeah.
That's one of the considerations that you should consider in your decisions.
Okay. But on the other side, I think what Mr. Zine was saying, at some point, if you, if it's unsustainable, you have to, and I think your comment was, in good times, pensions have gone up, in bad times, they've gone down, and so the issue comes to what the city can afford. But again, the secondary issue is whether people are working side by side and having different funds, is whether the city can sustain any of those pension systems.
That's a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, and just to remind, I'd like Mr. Santana to come up. My motion was directed at him, and it basically said that we would like the CIO to report back to the city council various scenarios of adjusting civilian and sworn employee pension contribution levels, um, up to the amount necessary for sustainability and the estimated impact that potential incremental adjustments would have on the recommendation in a three-year plan to fiscal sustainability. That's a lot of words, but Mr. Caretz seconded it, and Mr. Smith seconded that one. And before that, there was another one done by Mr. Garcetti and myself and all the rest of us, that basically said the same thing, and this was nine A was the thing. So if you could just report to us, all we're looking for is an understanding, appreciation, and a clarity on this issue.
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. So go for it.
Mr. Lavange.
No.
I'm sorry.
The CIO to report back on various employees. And if they have something to report back, I wanna hear it. If they don't, they don't.
All right.
Oh, now.
If, if, I would recommend if there's gonna be any specific discussion around our pension system, that it be done in closed session.
And are there things you want discussed with us in closed session?
Um, we're discussing these issues now at ERC. I would recommend that, um, we, we move forward with a discussion in the next thirty days, um, so that is consistent with the direction that I've been getting from the ERC. Okay, we'll work to schedule that. Thank you. Mr. Lavange.
Yeah, on the issue, uh, which relates right here, uh, have we looked at others, and I, I say this because there's eighty-eight cities in the county, you're a former county employee. Is there anything we could learn from the other eighty-eight, uh, or the other fifty-seven counties in the state of California, or any national issue here that would help us, guide us along?
Well, certainly, I think that the debate that you're having and we're having collectively is happening up and down the state. San Francisco, San Diego, uh, virtually every major jurisdiction is having a conversation about how to rein in pension costs. You know, everyone's approaching it in a different way. There's not one that I could turn to now, at least that I'm familiar with, I said we should duplicate what they're doing. And there's also discussion about a statewide initiative on this issue. But in the next several years, I would be surprised if there isn't any reform at various levels, given how important of an issue it is and how significant it is in relation to the various budget challenges that every jurisdiction is facing. Sally, I don't know if you wanna add to that, given your conversation with your colleagues?
I think you hit it accurately. There are a number of different proposals out there. Most currently, I would say, city and county in San Francisco. There, so there is a charter, um, initiative that's being proposed to the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco. Some of the things that they're looking at is increasing employee contribution from seven-and-a-half percent to nine percent of pay. Uh, also looking at three-year, or I think it was negotiated, um, to two-year final comp instead of one-year final compensation. So they are looking at those factors that we mentioned in how to reduce costs. So the contribution rate, I think, is gonna be applied to potentially some current employees and definitely for future.
What, in our employee contribution right now, we just made a change, correct, in the start of this fiscal year?
Right. Currently, um, employees hired after nineteen-eighty-three contribute six percent of pay, and this is just for lasers. Um, with the adoption of the early retirement incentive program, employees' contributions are going to increase to seven percent of pay beginning July two thousand and eleven. Um, so that's, that's the bulk of our members. Uh, there are different contribution rates, higher contribution rates for fire and police pensions, but they also have a completely different benefit structure.
And, and if someone is laid off, when do they determine if they, let's say they're laid off with, at a, at a particular age, at a time, when are they, and has anybody been laid off yet with Los Angeles?
Uh, I don't believe so, sir.
And is anybody being laid off, do we know, in the next month, or are we still going through the process?
No, I, I think it's very likely we'll start seeing, uh, folks laid off in the next, within the next thirty days.
The next thirty days. Will they have discussion on whether their retirement, their retirement is still there? If they have twenty-one, twenty-two years, but they're not eligible for E-RIP or anything?
Right. Right. We have all the information on our website available to our employees, so that they know what to expect when they terminate employment, whether through voluntary process or involuntary. But typically, what we'll look at is how many years of service they have and what their age is. If they're eligible to retire, then we'll try and have them retire for a normal service retirement. If not, if they have less than five years of service, all they're entitled to is their contributions made, that they made to their accounts, and we can refund that money to them.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. If there are no motions that were on this, there's no action necessary. This was an update. Thank you all for that, and we will look to schedule a more specific report back from the CAO, and we had the earlier motion on item number two. So thank you all very much. We appreciate your presence here. What, sorry? We did, I think, take the public comment cards on, did we do those already, or not? Yeah, we already did those, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, if we can turn, I know we have folks from the Public Works Department that are here. If we can turn next to item number, is it five, Madam Clerk?
Miss President, item five.
If there's no objection, and take that up next. Just to frame this, colleagues, this is one of the, this is the first, we've had general managers who have come here as a result of the committee work done, excuse me, by a number of you. This is the first general manager and bureau heads grouping to come before us. As you see the illustrious group coming up the aisle, that is Board of Public Works Commissioners and our bureau heads. This is a chance for us to dig in a little bit to what the impact of job eliminations would look like, and where those priorities might be. Like to recognize our CAO to say a couple of things. I'm going to turn it over after that to Mr. Weezer to lead this discussion as our Public Works Committee Chair, and we'll do this with each committee chair as well. We thank you, Mr. Weezer. I know you've had a number of these hearings in your committee as well. So this is a chance for us to begin to look into those impacts of service reductions in this coming year. So, Mr. Santana, if you want to say anything just about your expectations, because you're helping to guide this per the council instructions of general managers reporting, and then we'll hear from Mr. Weezer, who can ask to hear from individual bureau members. Mr. Santana?
Thank you. We are currently in the process of identifying in each department the impact of the deficit as we prepare the budget with each department and the mayor's office. Most departments are not in a position at this moment, given the work that we're currently doing, to be specific on the actual number of positions that they anticipate being reduced within their respective budgets, because that work is being done as we speak. My staff has been meeting every day with the departments, and we're trying to establish targets for each office, for each department, along with the mayor's office. Part of the process normally would have been that the budget would come out in April, and there would be more information on the various impacts on services through the context of the budget. The mayor has committed, from my understanding, to release the number of positions that would be impacted, and the description of the service impact, well before the release of the budget. I think he, the hope is to have that release in the first week of April, so there would be an opportunity prior to the adoption of the budget to actually appreciate the level of impact it's going to have on services, and certainly on the number of employees that we have. Departments, as part of the budget instructions that our office gave as they prepared the budget, did request that each department prepare a budget with an assumption of a ten or, and a twenty percent cut. And so one of the things that I think departments will be prepared to talk about is what a ten or a twenty percent cut will look like in their respective programs. And I think as a way of building a constructive and healthy discussion around these issues, I would recommend that you ask the departments to provide that kind of analysis and description in the context of the discussion, and also provide some direction as to what priorities are the most critical to you as council members, so that those priorities inform the final inclusion of the budget.
Thank you. And first, some overall comments on the four thousand list. As I motioned, when we were discussing a four thousand layoff, I had asked for a report back on who are those people, what are the service cuts. As was reported by our CAO, that information is not available to us, and it seems like we're back to square one. I mean, we at least had a lot of discussion and debate, but we're going to start it through the regular budget process. You know, we had a lot of panic and anxiety when, in fact, we could have gone through the regular mayor's budget process to have that. Do you see any benefit for us, Mr. Santana, having had these previous discussions, even though now it seems like we're going to go through the regular budget process for the discussion on the four thousand layoffs?
Well, I think, I would, I actually would recommend the better place to have these discussions when it relates to specific departments is when the context of the committees, that each committee have an opportunity to walk through with the department what their priorities are, and establish some direction on what areas should be the most likely to be cut, and what areas should be least likely to be cut, so that when it comes to you, to the full council, that work has already been done by the chair of the committee and the department, and it's a, you know, a lot of the drilling down on the actual department is a little bit more thoughtful. Certainly, each, you know, the motion was very clear on having these department, and that work could certainly be done within this context, but both due to the purposes of time and the ability to really have a much more extensive conversation, I would recommend that it be done within the committees.
Okay, well, thank you. And in my committee, in the Public Works Committee, we've been having some discussions with the bureau chiefs as to what are the, what have they faced so far, given E-RIP? What do they anticipate, given the thousand? We haven't had a discussion on the three thousand since that wasn't before us at the time we had these discussions in Public Works. If I could, with each bureau chief, if we could go down and just give us, as you did in committee, a sense of some of the budget constraints you're facing, given the possibility of a thousand layoffs, other budgetary factors, and since we don't have the number yet, or who, or how it might affect your bureau, if you want to elaborate on that, please do. And secondly, after we do that, if you could go into, what do you see your division, what is its core mission and core purpose in providing the services to the public, so we could have a sense, the full council, as to, as we move forward, and really focus on that core server? So however you want to handle this, go right ahead.
Good afternoon, council member. My name is Cynthia Doris, and I serve as president of the Board of Public Works for the City of Los Angeles. And let me just start off by saying, in the last several months, one of the things that we've been really trying to do is basically stabilize our office in terms of, we're still assessing what the impacts are of E-RIP. In the board office alone, we have a hundred and forty-two regular and resolution authority positions, and out of those hundred and forty-two positions, we had eighteen percent of our staff leave, or are still in the process of leaving, through early retirement. So what we've done is we've really gone through a complete reorganization to figure out, how do we still provide a level of service with the people that we have left? In addition to the eighteen percent of people that have left their early retirement through the thousand layoffs, we were impacted, seven people that we had to lay off. And we moved very quickly, so all seven of those people were placed, one at lasers and the rest within the bureaus. So eighteen percent plus the seven layoffs, there's been a big shift in the amount of people that have left the board office. Now, in accounting alone, there's been a significant impact, as we all know, the Bureau of Accounting under the board office deals with one point nine billion dollars in annual expenditures. Another big part of the board office is the Office of Community Beautification. The Office of Community Beautification is fifty-six percent of our overall budget, which is, most of that is contractual services, which provides graffiti removal, cleaning, green, and education outreach. So in terms of what we've been doing is really looking at what the impact of the current layoffs, and in addition, the retirement. So when we're looking forward, and we're looking at a ten percent reduction, we are looking at having impact on Office of Community Beautification, and specifically a fifty percent reduction in the educational outreach program, and a twenty-two percent reduction in the public right-of-way cleanup program. If you're looking at a twenty percent reduction, obviously, that increases, because we have a thirty-two percent vacancy in the overall board office, if any additional cuts would be looking at actual services to the community in the form of either graffiti removal, cleaning, green, and public right-of-way. But I think as a whole, as an entire department, you know, we're still going through the early retirement and figuring out the impact. As a department, we had over six hundred, we had six hundred and five people retire out through the early retirement, which has obviously affected us individually differently. But I'm going to turn it over to sanitation, and Enrique will talk about the specific effects on sanitation.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese. Enrique Zoldybar, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. We have been, one of the departments, one of the bureaus, that has been participating in the transfer process, as you had asked departments in special funds to be able to help by transferring folks from the general fund. And we've been very busy working with the Personnel Department and other departments. We had offered seventy positions to be transferred, and we were successful with a number of them, and we're continuing to work on being able to provide compatibility training, so we're able to take classifications that are not one-for-one match, that will still be able to function in a slightly different classification. So we're working through that right now. Our general metrics on numbers, we have, because of being special funded, our E-RIP departure will occur toward the end, as you know. But we have had so far fifty-eight people retire, and we expect total to be about a hundred and seventy people retire through E-RIP. And we have not, there are five priorities, back to the question by Councilmember Weezer, as to what our core mission is. You know, our mission statement is to protect the environment and public health, but we have categorized, I should say prioritized, five sub-core missions, if you will, in line with the budget development, and, you know, we have one through five, five programs. Clean water, which is our wastewater program, that's a number-one priority. Solid resources, that's our solid waste program, that's number-two priority. Watershed protection, which is a stormwater program, and that's number-three priority. And then we have a function under technology, that's number-four priority. And then last is the administration support, that's number-five priority.
And before you go on, what else is your bureau doing that's not part of those, you said five or seven, I understand, but part of those priorities, and should you be doing them?
Should not be doing?
Or should you be, so in other words, those are your priorities, that's your mission?
Yes.
What else is your bureau doing, and have you gone through a process within your department, within your division to ask, should we be doing these other priorities or services?
Yeah, we have done a number of self-analyses, if you will, on proximity to mission. Anything that we do, as you said, that should not be part of our core mission under any one of those five programs, and we have not yet. However, as you know, there's a proposal about whether we can also absorb something that is related to the environment, to our environmental purpose, in the form of environmental affairs, a part of that department to be brought to sanitation. So that's in consideration right now. But in terms of us shedding something that we have determined to not be part of our core, we have not.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Bill?
Good morning, councilmembers. Bill Robertson, Director of the Bureau of Street Services.
Good afternoon, now.
I just want to mention a couple of key issues, and I think it's something that all of us have done, and all departments in the city are looking at. It's very seriously, what are our true core functions? For me and for my bureau, certainly pavement preservation, maintaining our streets, resurfacing, our recycling program, our municipal asphalt plants, pothole repairs, those are our key functions and why we really exist. Certainly, we do many more things, but as we've looked at the impacts of E-RIP, budget proposals, our goal is to maintain pavement preservation at its current funded level. That is our critical function. Secondarily, our second priority would certainly be maintaining the cleanliness of the streets and our communities. E-RIP is going to have an impact on our motor sweeping operations citywide. Currently, we're looking at losing fifteen positions that may affect our residential routes. Our first priority in street cleaning is to maintain the restricted posting routes that generate revenue for the city. So we may see a slip in the frequencies of cleaning in the residential areas. It will be dictated on the actual need for those communities. We aren't going to go across the board and say everybody's going to get swept twelve weeks. Some will maintain it four weeks, some will slip to five, six weeks, others may fall to the twelve weeks. It'll be driven by the debris and the actual need of the community. We look at our urban forestry, which is another critical function that we perform. Also, our investigation enforcement, that enforces ordinances within the public right-of-way, illegal dumping, illegal vending. Our goal is to maintain, regardless of what the impact to E-RIP is, future layoffs, or the subsequent reductions in the budget. It is our goal to maintain critical services based on the actual need for communities. We will manage our resources. Yes, some smaller issues that we address on a daily basis just aren't going to be done anymore proactively. We'll become reactive and based on the demand from the public. Certainly, those frequencies are going to slip. When you look at illegal dumping, our goal is four to five days to respond, it may slip to seven or eight days. Just depends on the resources that are left available after we get through the budget process. But we're working very closely with the CAO and the mayor's office to ensure that we maintain as many critical functions. And no two communities have the same need for one specific service that we deliver. So we'll be looking at managing our resources to meet those critical needs for the individual communities.
And I do apologize, I forgot to answer one of your questions in terms of what's the core mission of the board itself. And basically, the board itself has four core missions. First and foremost, we serve as general manager to the entire Department of Public Works. The second is, we provide centralized department-wide services, including accounting, personnel, and emergency preparedness. One of the things that we've been working on the last few months is that we are losing our emergency preparedness coordinator through the E-RIP, so we have, we're coming up with a plan, how are we going to still serve that function? Because we take emergency preparedness very seriously, and losing that person, we've been working with the bureaus and figuring out how we're going to respond to emergencies. The fourth thing is, we provide citywide graffiti removal in the public right-of-way, and support the community through the community beautification grant program. And the fourth thing is, we raise funds to oversee the restoration of the historic buildings. That's through Project Restore. We realize over the last few years that maybe that's not our primary core function, so we've kind of given that up. We do have one position, that's unfunded position, that Project Restore funds itself, but we realize out of the four core functions, that's the lowest priority for us. John?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. How are you? John Reamer, the Director of the Bureau of Contract Administration, Inspector of Public Works. Our two priorities, inspection and compliance. Quality, compliance, and opportunity is what we do. We provide inspection services for all of the public works projects that are happening in the City of Los Angeles. What that means is not only in the Department of Public Works, but also for the Department of Airports, for the ports of Los Angeles, in some cases, Department of Water and Power. Any capital improvement project that's taking place in this city, where public funds are being used to finance those projects, our men and women are the inspectors that are there to ensure that quality work is done, that is done safely, and that is done in a way that's pleasing to all of you who made sure that the opportunities existed. Some of the things that take place in that are local hire opportunities, where we are utilizing project labor agreements. And in addition to inspection, we handle compliance. So we are the labor compliance officer for the City of Los Angeles. All work that's done, paid for with public funds, we make sure that the men and women who do the work for private contractors are paid the proper wage. Compliance also includes meaning the ordinances that belong to you, the council. Living wage would be one, equal benefits would be another. We are the designated administrative agency for the City of Los Angeles for all of those ordinances, so we ensure that the men and women who work are paid a proper wage. How will we be impacted by the budget challenge that we face? We're looking at approximately fifty-one of our employees that will be leaving due to E-RIP and or transfers. That's roughly thirteen and a half percent of our base number of employees, which is roughly three hundred and seventy-eight. Of that roughly thirteen percent, given the budget directive that we had, ten percent cut and twenty percent cut, and we did that based on our reliance on the general fund. What I mean by that is, taking our expenditures and the revenue that we bring in, we reckon that we were roughly needing five and a half million dollars of general fund monies to get through the fiscal year. The fifty-one employees, conservatively speaking, is roughly forty percent of that. So E-RIP alone is going to take us well past the twenty percent. What impact is that going to have? There quite possibly will be construction projects that we will not be able to provide inspectors on, and that's a discussion that we are having, and we're trying to take a look and see how that's going to work. We estimate that the capital improvement program for the city as a whole is going to increase for us by roughly eighteen percent, meaning we're going to go from roughly one point four billion to one point seven billion dollars in money spent. And that's across the board, in our Department of Public Works, at Lawa, at the port, DWP. In other words, it's spread out, but construction has not slowed to some extent as much as it has across the region. And I haven't even included private development. What I mean by that is, work that's done in the private, projects that are being done, a case in point would be L.A. Live. Private developers doing work, and that work entitles, or we, and require- Private developers doing work, and that work entitles or we require them to do work in the public right-of-way, our men and women inspect that work also. So the challenge that we have is, how do we continue to provide the inspection that we do, so that quality is not compromised, safety is not compromised? We're talking project safety as well as public safety. Traffic is a big concern of ours. We want to make sure that when contractors are working in the street, they're not working in the street in such a way as to create a problem for those motors and those pedestrians that are walking through that area. So it's something that we're still grappling with, quite frankly. I don't have an answer for you. We have looked at outsourcing. We have not found a more economical way of doing that. We've looked at MOUs that exist. GSD uses one, MOU 35, that allows us to partner with the building trades to bring on union inspectors through a MOU agreement. That's something that's still available to discuss. But until we establish what our capital improvement program is going to look like, and that's still up for discussion, I can't really tell you how many projects we will or will not be able to provide inspectors on. But that's the impact that we have right now with respect to the ordinances. That's still up for discussion. We have plans on bringing to council several considerations for ordinance changes that will, if you will, streamline contracting to minimize the time that we spend looking at some of the ordinances. We already are complaint-driven, so we're not doing any proactive enforcement with respect to the ordinances. We will continue to be more and more complaint-driven. And are we receiving complaints? Yes, we are. With respect to the ordinances, not only do we cover the council control departments, but we have MOUs with airport, the port, DWP. So we are covering all of the ordinances, and it will be a challenge. Discussion that I welcome, I would agree with Miguel, that when he stated we should have these discussions in the committees, so we can drill more deeply down into the issue and talk about, you know, the impact that we see and what ideas we have to make it better for all of us, given the situation that we have right now.
Before we go on to the next bureau, is, if we do work for the proprietaries, is it possible for them, through their funding, that doesn't affect the general fund, help us with some of the inspection work we have to do, some of the contracting work we have to do? Is that possible? Is that being looked at? Have you looked at?
No, that's my point. Right now, we are providing inspectors at the port, at DWP in some instances, at Lawa. For every hour worked by one of our inspectors, $5 comes into the general fund. So one would argue, we benefit by having more of our inspectors do the work instead of the proprietaries having to necessarily build up their staffing in those particular areas.
Or contractors.
Yes, most certainly. So it definitely benefits the general fund and the city as a whole.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Eddie Brahimi, Director of Bureau of Street Lighting. As you know, Bureau of Street Lighting is fully special funded. Our entire operation is funded from Street Light Maintenance Assessment Fund. So as part of this budget process, we haven't been asked to do any cuts or reduce our services. Actually, we are helping with the vacancies that we have. We're working with the Personnel Department and CIO to make transfers from general funded positions to our bureau. And as far as E-RIP, we have about, we have 24 positions that are going to take early retirements from our bureau. And I think with all those positions, we will work with, again, CIO and personnel to see if we could backfill the positions from transfers from other general funded positions. Core mission for Bureau of Street Lighting is to keep the lights on, and we have our maintenance and repair, we have our capital projects, and right now, our focus is on energy efficiency and reducing our expenditures on electricity. And that brings me to the LED program. You've seen our mid-year status report on LED program. We are on schedule to convert most of the streetlights in the city within next four years to LED and reduce our consumption. So with that, the impact on our budget as far as the financial situation of the city is minimum at this point.
Affected you?
The 24 positions will take early retirements, but my understanding is that we will be working with CIO and Personnel Office, Personnel Department to transfer general funded positions into those positions. So they're not vacated yet. Again, we're special funded, so it is going to happen. Not all of them are vacated. So it is going to happen in next month or so, and we're hoping by then we'll be able to have a plan to transfer general funded positions into our.
Thank you very much. And what I wanted to do here, colleagues, is, I have a number of questions, but I wanted to open it up for questions from anyone else. But what I wanted to do here is, we have one more bureau, but what I wanted to do here is to lay out what the anticipated 1,000 layoffs would have in each of these bureaus and divisions. Secondly, what is the core mission? And through our committee, we are going to further discuss that and drill down to say, what else are these divisions doing, and should we be doing them, given these fiscal times? Or is there another, more proper part of the city to provide those services? And go from there. But there's one more bureau here.
Bureau of Engineering.
Good afternoon. Mike Cantor, Deputy City Engineer, Bureau of Engineering. I'm here for Gary Moore, the City Engineer. He wanted to be here, but he's had a long plan, time away.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yes.
I'll bring the mic closer to you, please.
Mike Cantor, Bureau of Engineering, Deputy City Engineer. The Bureau of Engineering, core mission, of course, is the capital improvement program and the project delivery, design, planning, construction management of the public works projects. And also, we issue permits for work in the right-of-way. So that, you know, A permits, B, all the various permits that are issued for work in the public right-of-way, we have public counters, district offices that handle that. Presently, E-RIP is going to represent about 15% of the bureau. If you look at vacancies and you look at the possible loss of those, or sweeping of those, July 1, we're going to be about 30% smaller in terms of authorized positions. So we've already shortened public counter hours, 30 minutes a day. We have, in the public counter area, about 50% of our staff that work the public counters will be taking early retirement. So we're going to need to look at ways, how to keep counters functional. We do believe that the service levels are going to decline at the public counters. Our ability to respond to emergencies will be impacted in that we're going to have to take our engineers off of design to respond. So design projects will stop during the time that we are, you know, handling emergencies. And also, our ability in general to respond to non-emergency special requests, whether it be feasibility studies, it's going to be very limited.
Thank you. And overall, on average, given the existing financial situation, not counting the additional 3,000 proposed layoffs, on your projects that you have in the pipeline, have you done an analysis as to how much longer it's going to take to complete those projects?
We look at that continuously, but there's so much that's changing, you know, in terms of what is the bottom line, where are we? Obviously, all of the projects are going to have some type of impact.
But it's a moving target in terms of our discussions here. You're watching us every day to see what we do, and why put so much thought and analysis into a particular financial situation when it may change? Thank you.
Exactly.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Alakon.
Yes. First of all, the assessment that you're providing us right now is based on 1,000 eliminations? 1,000 job eliminations?
Yes, and then we went through the 10% and 20% reductions.
But in terms of numbers, the CIO just issued a memo targeting you on 4,000, so targeting all general managers to look at 4,000. So when you say 10% or 20%, is that based, how much is that based on?
So the 4,000, we have not completed that analysis yet. We're in the process of doing that now.
So when you talked about the current assessment you did was based on 10% or 20%?
Right.
Both?
We did one for each, one for a 10% and one for a 20%.
Is that closer to the 1,000 job elimination figure or 4,000?
Well, that's the addition to the 1,000, additional 10 and 20%.
Okay, I'm losing you. I'm trying to get us all on the same page with regard to the numbers. The CIO said 4,000 job eliminations. Did any of the presenters make comments related to that challenge?
From the board office, we have not completed that analysis yet.
Okay, so I'm asking, the 20%, which is the worst-case scenario you provided, is that close to the 4,000? Where is that on the scale? Should we double it?
I ask them, because in our committee, we've been discussing only the 1,000. We haven't discussed the, yeah, please, if we could amend the rules or whatever that thing is.
Mr. Weesar, you're going to clarify.
Thank you. We asked them to only look at the 1,000, because we haven't had any numbers on the additional 3,000. So what they are discussing, or what we've been discussing in committee, is the 1,000 proposed layoffs and E-RIP, and what that would affect their budgets. We haven't discussed that. That just came up today.
I'm just trying to put this in perspective. If we're going to move forward with 4,000 job cuts, and your assessment is based on 1,000, just to get a sense of how dramatic the event would be, I also wanted to hone in on contract administration. Many of the projects that you work on are funded outside city coffers, projects that are funded by the federal government, by the state government, Caltrans, MTA, whatever. Your potential cutbacks might jeopardize the ability to inspect projects that we get funding outside for.
That is true.
And therefore, could it put that funding in jeopardy?
Yes, yes, it could.
So we introduced, I introduced a motion, or an amendment to a motion in council that was going to exempt employees that generate revenue. It would seem to me that employees in that category are revenue generators and should not be considered for elimination.
The challenge that we as a city family will face, however, is that even when we take that course of action, and it is a wise one, we will still have projects that do not receive funding from outside sources, that are important to all of us. Recreation and Parks would be a good example. But Recreation and Parks, the funding source does not allow for covering the cost of city staff, be it design or inspection, on some of the projects. But I would argue that those projects have just as much value to the city family and the constituency as a bridge project or an airport project.
I think you're missing my point.
But I, no, I hear your point. What I'm going with this is that...
I don't think you heard my point. Let me repeat my point.
I'm sorry.
So we can make sure, okay? Because I'm working with you.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, if your positions are revenue generators, they should not be eliminated. If we may, if it may jeopardize funding that we are currently getting, those positions should not be jeopardized.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. So if you, in your assessment, I believe that you need to protect those positions that if eliminated, could jeopardize a federal grant, or a state grant, or an MTA grant, or a Prop C, Prop K grant. And those positions should not be eliminated in any way, shape, or form, they should not be included.
Understood.
And so, based on what I just said, would that change your assessment?
To some extent, but we would still face the same challenge, in that we will have projects that don't receive outside funding, that will not have inspection.
But the city receives outside funding.
The city does.
So that should all of them?
Not on all projects. Recreation and Parks projects.
Those positions should not be eliminated, whether they're funded by the general fund or not, if they generate more revenue than we're paying.
Agreed.
That's what I'm saying.
I understand.
So under that circumstance, I believe many of your positions should not be eliminated.
I agree.
And I believe the council acted to protect them.
Thank you.
So, but I also think that there are other positions in public works in particular that fall into the same category, that if those positions are eliminated, it could, in engineering, in, excuse me, engineering, let's see, engineering and, well, street lighting is a different issue, but perhaps even sanitation, the grants that we receive that if our employees do not work on those grants, we could lose those grants, and therefore, they should be defined as revenue generating positions, and should not be considered for elimination.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hahn, follow Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, actually, I wanted to speak in the beginning, before we kind of got into each of these presentations, because I kind of wanted an overall, and where Miguel went, there's Miguel, kind of an overall writing, a couple of comments. One is, I don't know about, I was, we know that these particular general managers were coming in, I don't know if that's you or if that's council staff, but I think as we move forward on this, if we could make sure we know exactly which general managers are coming in to report, helps us be a little bit more prepared in terms of our questions. And here's my problem as we go through this. And we have asked general managers, I know my staff has, on a number of occasions, to come in and meet with us and tell us exactly who is on the target list, exactly what positions are going to be laid off, exactly who's going to be getting notices, and I have been told over and over again, they don't have that information. And yet, yesterday, I got a call from a person in a position in the harbor who got their two-week notice. And again, we're hearing, the problem is, and I read in the front page of the Daily Breeze today, that the Warner Grand Theater is going to go dark, you know, because we're not prepared to hand it over to someone else to run it. I think for me, at least, I cannot speak for my colleagues, this is a very difficult situation we're going through. But I think there are many of us that went, again, it's not you general managers that are here today, but when did we decide to end childcare in Los Angeles? You know, when are we going to begin to be told honestly what these layoffs mean? What positions and people are we talking about? What services are no longer going to be there? I really feel like, you know, and maybe you can answer, how does a person at this point, what is the process for someone to get their two-week notice right now? How does that work? Who makes that decision? And why, why is that information being kept, literally, from the council member of that district?
The process is...
I'll take 20 minutes, too, like Jose got, yeah, 22.
Pardon me, that was before I took the chair.
Okay. Okay, then I'll just take 11.
We'll give you 11.
If you recall, our office prepared a list of 1,000 originally.
Right.
Okay, then we were, departments were directed to try to transfer as many people as possible to the special funds and proprietaries.
Right, 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 I get that.
And there's been some work done in that area, over 200 that have been done.
Right, right, I got that.
The mayor's office has been sending each general manager notices on the original 1,000, and they've been asking each general manager to report to the Department of Personnel on how many of those individuals that were on your original list transferred.
Right, right, right.
So of those who, those who remain, those are the ones that are subject to layoff, you know, or subject to being moved to another department to being...
I actually had the department tell me they did not know.
There are some departments that don't know yet.
But then the next day, a layoff notice went out. How could they not know?
Because they're doing that work now. I've asked for the same information. I don't have a list, a comprehensive list in my office that could tell you in the following departments, this is ultimately who's going to be laid off, because it's being done.
At some point...
No, I agree. I agree.
If a person has already gotten a two-week notice, at some point, someone knew that that person was getting a two-week layoff. Where did that come from?
The person was in the harbor department?
Yes. No, not in the harbor department.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the harbor area.
Oh, in the harbor area.
And actually, by the way, it was one of the positions that's funded by the harbor.
Rec and Parks.
Rec and Parks.
Okay. We'll work with each, with the departments to provide weekly...
And then again, cultural affairs. I hear a front page in the Daily Breeze, Warner Grand Theater is going dark. Okay, was somebody going to tell me that? And I think this is what we need to know, because, by the way, I've introduced a motion today specifically to say, if this is true, I'm going to bring in an interim group to begin running that theater. But if I didn't know that, then I can't even introduce a motion, you know, to help keep things running. So, you know, I know Rome is burning, but at some point, you know, we, I still feel like there are things we can do to save positions, save people at no cost to the general fund. But, you know, I can't wake up every day and have, you know, people calling my office, childcare, you know, people who have depended on our childcare, very upset. I mean, at some point, at some point, you know, we, and my staff has said I should make a verbal motion saying, I want weekly reports on the layoff notices.
That's a fair thing.
Yeah.
I think asking for weekly reports on... I think asking for weekly reports on which departments have begun the layoff process, how many positions they are, and the impact on services is an appropriate thing to request. So we'll work with the personnel department to provide weekly reports on that.
Yeah, because, I mean, we're all working together here. We're, I mean, I've, everybody knows I'm not a fan of layoffs, but nevertheless, I surely don't want layoffs to happen if we can find other ways to keep the services going. So, I've been very, very disappointed in this process, I got to tell you.
Do they have...
Yeah, they are. They're getting their two-week notices. People are getting their two-week notices right now, just in case you didn't know.
Ms. Hunt, thank you.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. LeBonge.
Thank you very much, members of the council. The city is public safety, public works, and public humanities. And what Ms. Hunt expressed is about the fact that if you don't have parks, and you don't have cultural facilities, it doesn't happen. If you don't have clean streets, maintained streets, street lighting, it doesn't happen. If you don't have police officers or firefighters, it doesn't happen. Public safety, public works, public humanities. Now, right here is a great team, okay, that we have. But Mr. CAO, yes or no, do we save any money? Because sometimes a street light is a city street light, and sometimes it's a water and power street light. Why doesn't street lighting go up to water and power, so there's efficiency in that? Is that a way to look at efficiency?
Because it would be more expensive to do it. And so, and so, it's funded by an assessment, and so there would have to be an increase in the assessment to be able to do the same level.
Is it a significant increase because of the outages that occur between the two styles of lights?
The, my understanding is, I could have Patty clarify, but that one of the biggest increases in cost would be the cost differential between DWP employees and our employees.
Councilmember LeBonge, we also have the issue that the city attorney has said the city charter precludes us from transferring street lighting to DWP. And so in order to effectuate that, you will need a change to the charter to do that. But in doing so, you do have to take into account the cost differential of street lighting employees to DWP employees, and there would probably be an increased cost to the street lighting.
Okay, I want you to look at that both ways, whether we try to bring something back here to strengthen the street lighting, or whatever the case may be. The next issue here that's big for me, Mr. Robinson, you were great on KOS 101 in the Morning with Scott Mason. I wanted to call and talk to you when you did that morning program. You work as, given resources, you do all the work. A big issue with me is clean streets. A big issue with me is the gutter. In the gutter is 80% of the trash is within a foot. That gutter, when it's dirty, it goes down that drain, and it goes into the ocean. But the guy next to you is another great guy. He has great teams. I'd like to put street cleaning in with sanitation, Mr. CAO, so they could follow the aspect of the trash, and try to keep it out of the drains before we have to clean the drains. What do you think of that, Mr. CAO?
I don't, I haven't really looked at that issue. I don't know if we've looked at it in earnest, but that's something we could look into.
I think we really should, members. I've been fighting for this a long time to try to, this is maybe an opportunity in the time. And looking at the Board of Public Works, Paul Rax is your best associate there, because he has the grant program. What kind of grants are going to be suspended because of the budget crisis, Mr. CAO? Or do you know yet?
So, for this fiscal year, we did award grants. What we did is, we went through and cleaned up all the old grants, so we're able to award grants this year. Next year, we're not sure if we're going to be able to award any grants. It's all...
How many dollars in grants do you do each year?
Normally, it's $525,000.
Right. It's absolutely important for us, members, either to look at other sources, because this is where we help neighborhoods do projects that are there. I just want to recite something so we know. The city departments, Los Angeles now has about 39 departments or commissions? About that?
About that, yeah.
Great, you got to be listening now. How many departments do we have with commissions?
We were today in the...
Right. We went from 44 to 39. But just to let you know, Santa Monica has 16, Long Beach, a big city, has 22, Burbank 14, Azusa 12, Pomona 17. So I think we should have a look how we could try to streamline and get more. Last question, John, and I appreciate all that you do. Can billiard inspectors do the same work as public works inspectors?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember, with all due respect, can they? I would imagine they quite possibly could. I would argue that in the early 90s, when we were going through this challenge before, we actually absorbed many of the building inspectors that were getting laid off. We do all the work, not just special inspection. So we have inspectors that do what some of the building inspectors do. They don't have any inspectors that do what we do. So, do we have overlap in some instances on city projects? Sure. Can we handle that? Most certainly we can.
I think we should look at that, and I look to the President of the Board of Public Works to look at ways to be efficient on that, so that we could try to maximize the dollar. And I know we speak of the fact that we are at such a critical time. A number of voter-approved projects, a number of approved services like sanitation are funded 100%, but now, how do we get them done if we don't have that shared process in that? So we should look at this as we look at it. Public safety, public works, public humanities are real, real, real important to everybody who lives in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts, followed by Mr. Parks.
Yeah, two things. One, on the idea of a weekly report back, if there's a way to get that in writing, so we can actually get that out to the community rather than verbal, so it just gets dispersed, doesn't get that message out.
I was assuming it was going to be done in writing.
Okay, and the other question I have is about inspectors, and I'm wondering, it's one thing to lay people off just to meet a number, but to actually provide the savings is a different question. My question is, are we getting the full freight in terms of the cost of inspectors? Are we charging every project that we could possibly charge, every dollar that it actually costs? And is there a reason that we're not doing that, or not planning to do it going forward?
We, two years ago, we looked at the cost for our services, and we were allowed to have a cost increase then. We considered whether or not we needed to do one now, and we felt that the services that we are charging for right now are equitable with respect to what other municipalities are charging for similar types of services provided. One of the challenges that we have with respect to bringing in revenue is that we're not able to spend as much time on the projects as we have in the past. I'm not suggesting to you that the work is being compromised. What I am suggesting is that the work in some instances may be slowed down, because it's now turned into what we would call spot or targeted inspection. The developers or the contractors aren't allowed to proceed any further until we're able to come back, take a look at the work, to make sure that the work has been done. That can cause an inconvenience, but that's, once again, that's due to not having enough inspectors. Do we have a place to charge for inspectors? Most certainly we do. We just don't have enough of them.
Well, it's, it sounds like we don't have enough of them because we're cutting them, not because we can't get them. So if we can charge the full freight of what it actually costs for them to do their job, and to do it right, why would we be short then? Could we not discharge what it costs for them to do their job right and keep them? There's no reason to cut them if they're being fully paid for by the people in need of that service.
I've had conversations with Miguel and the office of the CAO. One of the challenges with construction is that it's not black and white, it's gray. And for all of our capital improvement programs, not only in Public Works, but at the airport and at the port, projects slide. It's not as easy to know for a fact that this project is going to start and stop when it does. So what we've been grappling with is the convergence of all of these programs happening at the same time. And do we staff up for the peak, and then what happens when we find ourselves in the valley? So the challenge more for us is to, as a city family, how do we take a look at how we better use the resources that we have in inspection, so that we are on point as to making sure that we are covering our projects, and where we need to expand to bring on additional inspectors, we have a mechanism in place, 90-day rule is one, MOU 35, which allows us to utilize the building trades to supplement what we have, and at the same time, not compromise what the inspectors are going to do, and we don't run into challenges with not delivering the services that we can. I believe it's there, we just need more time to have the dialogue. And the CAO is committed. They realize that this is something that we need to discuss as well. It's a city challenge amongst the proprietors as well as Public Works. We started, we just need more time to continue it.
Yeah, I'm not sure my question was answered at all. Do we charge the full freight at every opportunity?
Yes, oh, yes, we do.
So we're not just charging something comparable to other cities? We're charging every penny that it costs to provide an inspector on a project?
Yes, yes, we are.
Then why would we cut them? Because in theory, if you cut it, then you're cutting that entire, that entire full freight amount, and so you're gaining nothing in terms of getting us closer to our shortfall. So we're either gaining nothing, or we're not being truthful about fully funding those positions, but it can't be both. So it would make no sense to cut these positions that are fully funded unless we're really not being truthful, and they're not really being fully funded, in which case we get some savings. So one way or another, we shouldn't be cutting these positions. We should either be increasing what we charge to the project, or we should be being more honest with ourselves about what the real cost is. Unless you can tell me how we save money based on a fully funded project being cut.
There are some programs that the, and now, this is going to turn into an accounting discussion, which I'm probably not the best one to engage in that dialogue with you. But there's some programs where they're bond-funded, and the bond itself does not allow for you to recoup all of the overhead costs. So whereas the direct cost for that inspector with respect to the time that they spend on that project is covered, the indirect costs, the overhead, the support staff, will not be. So that's the discussion, that's the challenge. That's where the quote-unquote "general fund reliance" comes into play on some programs. A good point would be the bonds with respect to Prop F, Prop Q. The bond itself had restrictions as to how much cost you could recoup with respect to your overhead. We had the same thing with Prop K. So those are the challenges there. So the direct costs for the inspector itself, they're covered. The indirect costs are the challenge that we have to reconcile.
Now, this may be a going-forward question. Why would we not cover the overhead in the course of that bond? Is there a legal reason why, or do we just not do it and figure we could, we'd always have the extra money to eat those costs?
I would imagine that it's language placed in the bond when the bond is presented to the voters for them to decide whether or not they want to support this. And one of the things that voters have said is, we want to ensure that the monies that we're going to be charged are going to be going directly into the deliverance of these projects, or the delivery of these projects, and not to compensate for huge managerial staffs for the many departments. And so as a result, we've said this is something that we will do our best to accept, so that we can have the greater good, which is to produce the fire stations, and the animal shelters, and the police stations. And we've managed it in a partnership amongst the Bureau of Engineering, our bureau, the CAO, and the CLA, so as to make sure that we are delivering the projects on time and under budget, and during times when things are good, we're able to absorb not being able to pull in the full amount on other programs that we have.
Thank Mr. Coretts. Your time is up. Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Alakon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Miguel, could you tell us, we've had different versions of this, have we resolved the issue of the special funds versus general fund in the sense that at one time, we were holding 10% of the general funds as an equity issue between general fund positions? Have we moved away from that, in that we are allowing the general funds to help people and also get the work done?
Are you asking in terms of the people that we hire?
I'm asking in light of, initially, when we started several months ago, there was an insistence that we had the same amount of cut for general and special funds, and we kept, some of us kept saying, you're just going to accumulate special fund money and not use it, and people wouldn't be doing the service in the community. And then later, I think it was an assessment that it was impacting negatively on the general fund. So have we gone back and unraveled those early decisions to where special fund positions are being funded to the full, to the max, those that do not have an impact on the general fund? And have we solved that early decision or resolved it?
Right. We're trying to do everything we can to maintain special funds, projects, and positions full, and encourage transfers from the general fund to those special funds. We're working on one outstanding issue when it comes to the issue of furloughs across the board, and we hope to resolve that soon in terms of the impact between special funds and general funds.
Okay. And then, let me ask also, you did the FSR within, what, the two months?
That's correct.
In there, did you address the issue of venues and theaters, and how the city, what was recommended and what was approved?
Our recommendation was that the city worked towards finding private operators for the theaters and the various art venues that we currently have, and that the positions that are currently being utilized to maintain those various venues be eliminated.
Okay, so that was approved by the council?
That was correct. That's part of the original 1,000 position eliminations that...
And then, recently, the council proposed a motion that added another 3,000, and it was approved. Is that the motion you're working off of in the sense of layoff list, or how you're approaching layoffs with departments?
There were, there were two pieces to that motion. The first piece reaffirmed and gave us authority to proceed forward with the original 1,000. And then, the second piece asked that we identify an additional 3,000 and gave us the authority to proceed on those.
Okay, and so that's what you're using as your authority as you move forward?
That's correct, and the mayor has argued that the layoff authority is given to the general managers. The general managers are the ones that are the hiring authority for each department. And so, the authority comes as virtue of being a general manager as directed by the mayor.
Okay, but the issue is, the funding authority is where?
The funding authority comes from your council.
Okay, so if you have no funds, you can't have positions, so whether we cut off their pay and they quit, or you lay them off, is the same result?
That's correct. And so, the council's action to proceed forward with the original 1,000 and the additional 3,000 provided that authority.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, we met with you recently, and you used the term, give it straight, forced account. Could you explain to what that means and how that impacts your operation?
Yes. Forced account basically means that we're doing work with city forces, city employees.
Okay. So the force is city, the city workforce?
Yes, that's correct, as opposed to contracting out, using contract forces.
Okay. So when you get grant money, there's got to be a distinction, hopefully be sooner than later, as to how those funds get used, so that if it's forced account, then it's clearly established that those funds are to be used to either save city jobs or give city employees work?
That's correct. In the past, there's been no restrictions whatsoever, whether it's federal, state dollars on the restriction, you can't use forced account. It was only recently with the influx of the R dollars that came into the city of Los Angeles, that the Federal Highway kind of changed their guidelines midstream, and decided that the goal of the R funding, those stimulus dollars, was to be sent to cities and counties and spent on competitive bid process. We had gone through the process, got our forced account approvals, and the Federal Highway Administration has allowed us to move forward with those projects. However, with that said, any future R projects are excluded from any forced account use.
So the possibility is, if you receive additional R money, then the way you allowed city employees to do the work, you do not have that ability, and if the city does not fund those positions, are those positions in jeopardy?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, if the R money comes in and is for outside contractors, you're limited in your ability, other than to seek RFPs and get outside contractors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
Back in February, February 18th, we passed a motion to ask for a matrix from the CAO of what the status of our decisions has been. And we haven't seen that matrix. I just wanted to get a sense of when that matrix is coming.
We've been working with the city attorney and the CLA to put that together to identify all the actions that have been taken, and I've instructed my office... And I've instructed my office to identify a cost savings for each one of those pieces that has been approved by your council. The reconciliation of the deficit that we currently have to the various actions that your council has taken will be reflected in the FSR that we'll be releasing at the end of March.
Okay, we have, we have other grants besides R. But when we apply for grants in any department, sometimes it relies on the work that you do. So if Recreation Parks is going to build a building, contract administration is likely to inspect it at some point, correct?
Yes.
But if your forces are reduced, if we have an application for a grant out there that relies on matching funds that include city workforces, and then we lay off those workforces, does that kill the grant?
I'd have to see more of the language.
It's sort of a rhetorical question?
I understand.
Because it sort of speaks for itself. But obviously, if we don't have the match, we cannot get the grant. My question is, have your departments done an assessment of the applications for outside funding of all the departments relative to workforces that, your workforces that are being used to match those grants? Has there been assessment as to whether or not we would lose those grant applications as a result of reductions in your workforces? Has that assessment been done?
If I can, Councilman. I think specifically for me, I think one of the key things is the sources of, the outside sources of funding, for me, are one, a CRA, a CDB, a DOT, comes to me and wants me to construct a project, and they're going to supply the funding.
But you don't know about applications.
Yeah, well, that's true. But here's the kicker for me, and goes to what I think you're trying to say, is that if I can't, if I don't have the resources, because I'm losing people through E-RIP, I can't do that work for CRA, which now means they must go out to a competitive bid that reduces the scope of the project.
Or they may lose the grant.
Pardon me?
They may lose the grant.
That's true.
Because we didn't comply. So I just want to, what I'm saying is, we need to be cognizant that if we cut certain workforces that we may be offering as matching grant obligations, that we may be killing future opportunities to receive funds from a variety of sources. And I'm saying that we need to do an analysis of that. Mr. Santiago Santana, Miguel, you said that you had the authority to move forward on layoffs.
Well, the authority is not given to me. The authority is given to each general manager. Only the general manager.
Who gave that authority?
The authority was given to you by the motion that was approved by your council.
The motion, I believe, asked for a report back to council before any layoffs were conducted.
The motion that introduced the additional 3,000 layoffs eliminated that 30-day provision, and reaffirmed the original 1,000, and provided the authority to move forward on those 1,000. And then, in addition to that, the mayor has directed.
And so move forward without checking in with the council? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go back and find it, and I'll let you know if you're correct. And if you're correct, I won't say anything else.
That is the last speaker on the queue? If there's nobody else who wishes to be heard on this? We do have public comment, don't worry. And if not, we'll turn to that. Go to the speakers we have. John Walsh is our first, and Arnold Sacks will follow.
You know, Eric, I'm told I can call you Eric now. Eric, you're building a huge multimillion-dollar parking structure next to the Ricardo Montalban Theater at this very moment, after you demolished the building, while you're putting out for sale the parking structures we already have. That's insane. That's LA. That's the LA City Council. And I just want you to know, HollywoodHighlands.org will explain exactly what's happening in Hollywood. As far as 3,000, 4,000 layoffs, number one, is this is not up here. I hope people understand out there that these people were not hired. Ms. Ruiz was not hired. She was appointed by the mayor and gets about $200,000 a year with the extra additional fringe benefits. And of course, he never met her before. Oh, except the fact that she's his cousin. And I just want you to know, I'll finish up by saying HollywoodHighlands.org. Let the competition begin. Let it begin. I said it today at the Board of Public Works. Ms. Ruiz, you and the mayor are running against Mr. Weezer. You're not going to get 10 or 15% of the vote.
Sorry, if you'll adjust the council's, it'll help, please.
You're finished.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Again, it's the numbers. 4,000, 1,000, 3,000, 5,000, 2,000, 8,000, 6,000, 4,000. How many people are being laid off? 2008, 2009, 2010. When did we first start with this? But a couple other things. The direct costs versus the overhead. So these positions that generate income, do they cover the overhead? Or do they just cover the direct costs? That's a real important question, because if they don't cover the total overhead, then they're actually costing the city money. Because who's paying for the benefits? Who's paying for the, who's paying for the retirement? Let's put it. The language of the issues, I believe one of the people said, precludes what the money, how the money will be spent. So we've seen this happening with the MTA, where the bonds and the issues are passed, and for the structures to be built, and low and behold, there's no money to operate. There's no money to pay the people who run the system. But we got a system built. Every time the MTA puts a system on the track, there's no money to, we have a shortage. We don't have the facilities to hire workers. And who gets hammered? The public. So it's always chasing the tail, always the third party. Stop the rhetoric. Stop all this BS and address the problem. How many people are being laid off? 1,000, 3,000. Honest Jan Perry said this number was talked about in 2008. Now we find out, no, 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 no. Mayor just said 1,000. Then he just stepped it to 3,000. 2008, 4,000. E-RIP, 2,500. How many people are being laid off? How many people are being transferred? What's the total amounts?
And now we have an amendment before us. I think number 5A, has that been circulated? Mr. Weezer, do you want to describe the amendment that you have for 5A?
And I just returned, did we close?
Comment?
No, we haven't yet.
We haven't?
I have a comment after Mr. Weezer.
All right. So why don't we go to Mr. Labons, in the meantime, we'll come back to you. Mr. Weezer, is that it?
Hey, just wanted to have a question. Technically, in Mr. Sacks, you did say something that sparked an interest here. The Metropolitan Transit Authority is on an aggressive program for Prop R. They need cooperation from any city where they do the work. They said, and if the CIO could listen to this, they said they would hire Los Angeles engineers. Have you heard that, Mr. City Engineer, Deputy City Engineer? Okay, so what I'm asking is for friendly amendment, because all these projects are not going to get built unless we have the people there to work. They're going to build it through a city. When they get to one other city, they're going to work with their city. If those cities aren't ready, they're not there. And I know it's the mayor's initiative that we support to try to build these systems. That being said, there's a contact at MTA. I'm looking at the Deputy City Engineer. I want you to call him, and also the CLA, to have a motion that would affect us to be able to, they would pay for these employees. I just spoke with a representative of MTA in the last 48 hours, and someone from the city who tipped me to this issue. So there's an opportunity to get people working on projects, like Mr. Rosendahl, who's been a champion of that, only if we get the people there, so we can find that out. So you're going to come see me? We don't need a motion. We'll give you the number. You could call and see if we can make a marriage there to get work moving forward. And the other thing, too, is that I have more time. Our traffic issues on the street, when we have a restriction, like Beverly Boulevard, you're going to repave, right, Mr. Robertson from Wilton? But you used to repave them on weekends because it was less impact to the community. Now you have to pave them on weekdays?
Well, I think the makeup of our city has changed. Historically, we did most of our work at night downtown. We can't work downtown at nights now because of the fact that we have so many lofts and so many individuals moving in. In order to work at night now, we have to go to the police commission and get permission to do so. So I think the residential issues, surrounding residential issues, have precluded us from doing night work. We're trying to do more weekend work. But then some work certainly just needs to be done during the day.
Are you, at this point right now, in this calendar year, fiscal year, are you restricted from doing weekend daywork?
No, not weekend daywork, no.
Okay, good. And Wiltshire Boulevard, which looks as bad as the pictures Dr. Krupp has of the Mars at the observatory, what's the plan on that? How come we can't go? That's been years since Mr. Parks stole that 10 million. No, you didn't steal it. You just applied it to another project. Strike that for.
Don't mind Mr. Labons if you can get that answer offline, just so we can keep in coordination with the Brown Act about him this before.
Wait a second. It's important for the people to know.
I know. We do have to abide by the Brown Act. This isn't open questions for Public Works. It's specifically on the layoffs and end positions.
But with layoffs, will it affect the ability to do Wiltshire Boulevard? Is that the city attorney talking, or the president?
No, no, I said thank you. You're in line now. You can answer.
All right, I'm in line. Thanks.
Again, as we move forward on the project, whether or not it's done by forced account or whether it's actually contracted out, I would say more than likely, it may be a split-type project, where certain phases are done by contract, and then the Bureau would do some of the work.
But we're looking right now. This, in a year from now, Wiltshire should be done.
Thank you, Mr. Labons.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, then, Mr. Alacan?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Colleagues, before you is a motion, item 5A, which is asking the general managers to provide information for the old question we've been asking here, which is, are we eliminating positions which in fact bring more revenue to the general fund? Today, the Contract Administration Office mentioned to us that some of the proposed layoffs in the 1,000 actually help the general fund in the work they're doing with proprietary departments. So this is actually asking the general managers to provide a report on any layoffs that we would actually be losing money to our general fund instead of, through the work they do, instead of helping us with our general fund deficit. So it's a report back to the general managers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, for first time. Then Mr. Alacan.
The, is there a difference in eliminating positions and layoffs? Sometimes it's one and the same. Sometimes there's a difference, isn't there? Can somebody address that, if I'm making any sense?
Yes, there is a difference. I mean, sometimes there's a difference. If a position, for example, if a position is vacated through E-RIP, that position could be eliminated and not effectuate a layoff.
Okay. So when we talk about 4,000 positions, or 1,000 positions, or 10 positions, sometimes there's a difference between that and actually somebody getting a pink slip if we eliminate 10 positions, 100 positions, 1,000 positions, or 4,000 positions.
That is correct, and that's the exact work we're doing now. We're identifying how many positions from the original lists were vacated as a result of E-RIP, as a result of transfers to special funds or proprietaries. And then from that, how many positions remain? And from what those, the positions that remain are the ones that are subject to a layoff.
Okay. So when it comes to departments, you start the year off budget-wise with a certain number of positions, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you have that exact number of bodies in those positions, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We have what we refer to as our annual authorities, which are the number of positions we can maintain. Each year, through normal attrition, some of those become vacant. So then we have resolution authorities that are approved on a year, by year basis, depending on the actual funding that may be available. But yes, many times, our actual authorities, we may have the authority, but it may not be filled by a person.
Okay. So for example, Mr. Robertson, what, how many positions are, do you have as we stand in this budget here today? You, in your department?
I think my authorities are roughly about 1,300.
Okay, so you have 1,300 authority positions. It doesn't mean that you have exactly 1,300 people working for you today. Okay. So technically speaking, you can have 1,300 authority positions, but you really aren't supposed to have or can't really have 1,301 people working for you.
That's correct.
Right? But you could have 1,300 authority positions, but only 1,220 people actually working for you today, correct?
Correct.
So technically, it can be in one direction, but not in the other?
That's correct.
And if it's in the other, you got a lot of explaining to do, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to somebody, especially the people who budget for the city. Okay. Who budgets for the city of Los Angeles when it comes to giving you those authorities?
It's, we work closely with the CIO, and it's approved through the budget process.
And the budget process is done, is this part of the budget process, this body here?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why I ask you that mundane question is because sometimes people forget that. I'm not saying you forgot it. Obviously, you didn't. You answered the answer correctly. Thank you. But also, Miguel, this last question, Mr. President, is this. Approximately, what is the nearest figure you can give us today of the number of authority positions that were budgeted at the beginning of this fiscal year?
Citywide?
Yeah. I mean, sworn, everything, what have you. Take your time. To the nearest thousand.
Right. Do you guys know the answer to that?
To the nearest thousand positions, how many bodies were budgeted? Excuse me, not even bodies. It's not bodies. It's positions. Authority positions were budgeted at the beginning, to the nearest thousand? Or the nearest 5,000?
Approximately 35,000.
Approximately 35,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Alacan.
Well, Mr. Santana, I told you I'd press my button only if I disagreed with your opinion. And I pulled the motion that was made, and my reading is that it didn't, in fact, authorize layoffs before July 1st. Because it reads that the council reiterates blah, 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 the elimination of an additional 3,000 position authorities necessary, including layoffs. And then number two says, the council hereby instructs all departments and officers to ensure that all positions are identified within 45 days and scheduled for elimination as of July 1st. We're not at July 1st. I don't believe the council ever acted to authorize layoffs before July 1st. And if there are layoffs going on, they are without the authority of the city council. So I do challenge you on your assessment of that motion. I believe that your reading is incorrect. And so I would ask that we, that we stop any layoffs that are going on without the authorization of the city council. Secondly, I'm a little concerned about this discussion because I really wanted to get a sense of what services we're talking, what. I mean, I'm hearing, I was driving down the street the other day, and all of you do this. You drive down the street, and then you see those trees that are cut really weird because they go into the street, so they're cut at an angle. So if you're driving along, it's so that they don't hit your car, or you don't hit the trees as you're driving along. And then I'm hearing, you know, we're going to eliminate the street tree maintenance. Does that mean that those trees are not going to be cut, and my car is going to crash into those trees? Is that what, is that what happens?
Yeah, I think you, when you look at the proposed layoffs, 100 of my individuals have been targeted for the layoff process. We have 30 individuals that have either transferred or gone to other special funded. That leaves me a balance of 70 individuals that potentially could be laid off. We are working very closely with DWP on two different programs.
I'm not talking about the bodies. I'm talking about the services. Are we saying we're going to stop cutting those trees that are blocking traffic? Isn't that a violation of state law?
No, well, yes, it is. And even with the reductions, what you're going to see, the Urban Forestry Division will go from a proactive group addressing those specific issues ahead of time.
But all I want to know is if you're not going to cut those trees.
No, I'm still going to cut them. I'm going to maintain, I'm going to maintain in emergency response mode. That's all we're going to be doing. If these cuts go through, we will not be proactive. We will respond. We will respond to emergencies.
Okay, now, do we have a responsibility to maintain the pedestrian thoroughfares?
That's correct.
So we can't just give the responsibility to the owner of the property to fix the sidewalk?
You can.
We can?
You can because they owe you.
But if they, if they fail to maintain them, and this happens essentially socially, I, I would think the courts would find that we are liable because in no way possible could the, the owners of the properties maintain these, these decrepit sidewalks.
Well, and under current law, the 1911 Act, the private property owner today still has the responsibility to maintain the sidewalk adjacent to his property.
But it's been our pattern and practice to fix those sidewalks in conjunction with them at a rate of 50%, am I not correct?
Mr. LeBons is our next speaker.
We've been fixing them.
Yes.
So, so we decided, Mr. Pattern and Practice of fixing them, if we just stop cold turkey, I believe we'll get sued up the kazoo.
Mr. Alacon, if you can press your button again. Uh, Mr. Parks actually for the second time, and then Mr. LeBons for the third.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I would just wanna comment on, on the issue of this, of the trees. I think we've given you guidance on 12 years cycle, but you still have the emergency responsibility. And you're also working on the issue of sidewalks. And historically, the city had sidewalks as a responsibility of the property owner up until about 74, so, and the reason that we changed was that there was some federal money. But what was the very narrow slice of the sidewalks that the city took responsibility for?
Only those sidewalks damaged as a result of parkway tree root growth.
So that was the only thing that the city took response to? All other sidewalks damaged belongs, has always belonged to the property owner?
That's correct.
Okay, and part of the process of looking at these issues, you're, uh, looking with the city attorney to return the sidewalks damaged by trees back to the property owner?
That's correct.
Okay, and then it's not a matter of whether we are abandoning our responsibility, since 1911, it's not been our responsibility?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanna clarify for the public that in dealing with sidewalks, historically, it's been the process that belongs to the, the property owner. It wasn't until 74 that some grant money came out, but then we ran out of the grant money. And so therefore, we continued not fixing the sidewalks. In fact, you gave us a figure recently that reflected in a 10-year period, we spent $100 million on sidewalks. And it was your estimation, they were in worse shape 10 years later than had we, when we started with 100 million?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And we have how many miles a sidewalk?
We have 10,750 miles a sidewalk.
Sidewalk, and under the plans that we've had over the last couple of budget years, you've estimated, how long would it take for the city to fix them?
About 83 years.
83 years. So even with 10 limits, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. LeBons.
Yeah, uh, good discussion on public works, public safety, public humanities, public work, so it's right here, and the issue of, and I've gotten responses, because people do watch Channel 35, they absolutely don't believe, Mr. Parks, that it's gonna be easy for us to say it's back on you. I know Mr. Alacon said it's a pattern and practice, which it has been, but there would be some discussion. I would like us to look first at the commercial side first, because that's where the most pedestrians are, uh, on that issue. But another issue that has really affected your bureau is the E-RIP. Uh, I forget his name, and I apologize for not knowing his name, but he retired out of the Hollywood Yard, and he had a special duty where he would handle the, uh, court referrals and other, with supplemental service. That is going out the window. Could you explain to council about that? And I'm sure it's not just the Hollywood Yard.
No, I think we've, we've always been, uh, proactive in trying to identify additional resources to perform many of the services we provide. So, under the ASP, Alternative Sentencing Program, we've been working with the courts. People are deemed to serve so many hours of community service, we bring them in on weekends, they do, uh, minor cleaning work, they may do, uh, sucker growth removal around tree wells, so we use them for, uh, non-skilled labor type positions.
Right.
Uh, and, and helping to maintain the city.
And, uh, just members, so, we mentioned this too, because of the rains, and it's been a good rain this year, even in, and this is a, the tree wells are, are almost as big as the tree themselves, that some of them, because of the growth. Someone's gotta clean that, but there's no one there to clean it. And we gotta enlist the public's help, the youth of the city, and some beautification project like America the Beautiful, I'm looking at you, Madam President. Uh, in my hike this morning, I noticed on a different trail, I was in Griffith Park, it's already hip high, the mustard, it's already hip high. And, uh, there, it's been a lot of growth, which will include the weed abatement that's there. Now, the one thing I did wanna say, if you could create, and I asked one of our sergeants in his 29-year career, how many tickets did he get for littering? And he gave, uh, less than a dozen, uh, but he did that. We need to, people who, uh, we all want clean bills of health, we don't want people to smoke, but if they do smoke, they gotta pick their butts up. They can't flick them out of the car, because then they go down to the gutter, to the drain, to the ocean, et cetera, that cycle. But we do gotta find a way to encourage or cite people to take care of their sidewalks in a business district, so you don't have a, a curb-high amount of trash in front. Kinda like the old movies, where you'd see the, in, the business person with the little vest sweeping before the shot. Oh, but maybe that's something, initiative, uh, citywide initiative, the beautification could say, it would help clean the streets, clean the city. Because I think we need to be a partnership, because nothing's worse than the picture of our, uh, our contribution to the city of Long Beach, uh, when all the trash comes through our drains, and other cities too, but mostly ours. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl with a point of order.
Yeah, point of order, uh, 2 o'clock, Transportation Committee's supposed to meet. Uh, we have people up in the room. What is our sense of, of adjournment?
I think we lose quorum at 2 o'clock, so we have one other speaker on the queue, Mr. Alacon, and then we have about two minutes left. We have a couple public speaker cards on item, uh, number four, and then we're done.
And then, uh, 6 and 11?
Uh, sorry, and then there's, we have some, just, uh, we have a card on 6, and a card on 11.
But have it in the possession.
Those are just called, those are called special.
Am I called for 2:15?
We may, even with those cards, we may lose quorum at 2 o'clock, either way, but we're gonna try to get to as much as possible before that.
Okay.
But I think 2:15 is safe. Mr. Alacon.
Council members, these are core services to the city of Los Angeles, uh, and I believe that if we make, uh, if we cut, cut their budget with an axe, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have hell to pay, and that, and it's gonna be in the form of lawsuits. Our liability is gonna be greatly increased. I, I guarantee you, you know, if, if we hand over the responsibility to take care of the trees to the people that own the trees, um, I guarantee you, it's gonna turn the Million Tree Program on its head, because people are gonna chop down those trees. There, there will be a million trees that will be eliminated, because that'll, that'll solve the problem of the roots, that'll solve the problem of the, of the, uh, the overgrowth, that'll solve the problem of the cracked sidewalks, they just cut them down. Uh, that is poor policy, uh, and, and it even has a negative impact on our environment. Uh, the contract administration, they, while they don't get money necessarily directly from the grants that they are in, uh, for the projects they're inspecting, they, uh, in fact generate revenue for the ci, for the city by virtue of keeping us in compliance with those projects, which do generate revenue, and our interpretation of revenue generating needs to be very broad. We need to, we need to understand that positions, uh, that, that can, can be fully funded by the general fund may in fact be generating more revenue by virtue of the function they perform, and, and our assessment needs to, needs to look at it that way. Um, if, if we are in violation of, of, uh, environmental laws, for example, our, our water drainage system, even though that falls within the Bay Area of sanitation, it's not just sanitation that, that looks at, at the water drainage, there's, there's transportation planners, they all look at those, those issues as we move forward. And, and so as we make these cuts, we have to be very careful. I recognize that we have to cut a budget. I recognize that we have to eliminate position. I supported the elimination of 1,000 with the idea that we could do it without having to lay off. Um, but we have to be careful that we don't cut in such a way that it creates more cost to the city than less, by virtue of creating liability situations. That's my concern, and this department, I can think of no other department that evidences that more than the Public Works Department. These are core services, we have to protect them, not only for the quality of life in our city, but for the quality of our budget in future years.
Thank you, uh, there are no other members wish to be heard on this item. Um, we did the cards on this, so let's go ahead and we'll take no action on this, we appreciate the updates, and thank you all. We can always have that come back, we'll work with Mr. Weezer on the Public Works, uh, Committee for that.
And Mr. President, did you want to vote on the amended motion?
I'm sorry, there was amended motion. That's correct, let's, let's take up the amended motion, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Uh, if we can go to the other items called special?
Uh, next item is item 4, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, uh, Mr. Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item 4, and then Mr. Sacks.
Sacks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks, I think we're out of time, but we'll make sure that's in the record. And Mr. Walsh, you have one minute left, if you'd like to speak, but Mr. Sacks, you're out of time.
I'm out of time.
Yep, you're out of time, sorry. Yep. Okay, Mr. Walsh is gone, so we'll go ahead and please, uh, why don't we continue? Uh, Mr. Weezer, this was the motion on, um, on the additional layoff positions, you wanna keep it here so we can continue to get those reports? Okay, let's, let's continue that one week then, without objection. Next item?
Uh, next item is item number, uh, 6, and that was also called special for cards.
Okay, and that was also Mr. Sacks and, uh, Mr. Dowd, who is left. Go ahead, and on number 6, we'll continue that, and we'll take those together, um, in a future date for one week. Uh, next item?
Uh, next one is item 11.
Okay, that, those are cards for Mr. Walsh and Mr. Dowd as well, um, on item number 11. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Happy March 11th, 3-1-1 day, everybody, and if we can go to the next order of business.
There is a special one, uh, that was introduced by Councilmember Perry, and, uh, the maker of the motion will speak to the findings on that.
Uh, Ms. Perry? On the, on the, uh, the motion, please.
Yeah, this is on a fast food interim control ordinance, this would be the second and last extension.
So, sorry, could you, we could, what, hear you? Say that one more time?
This is for the, uh, fast food interim control ordinance, this would be the second and last extension of this ICO. Uh, the current ICO is set to expire this coming Sunday, March 14th, so it is imperative that we act today to reinstate this for an additional six months, so I ask my colleagues...
And you wanna make the findings that this came to our attention after the posting of...
I can't hear you.
Would you wanna make the finding that this came to our attention after the posting of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on the findings.
11 ayes.
Okay, and on the substance, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved, next order of business, forthwith, please, without objection.
Yes.
Uh, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And there's an excuse on this, councilmembers, I request a excuse Friday, March 26th, for city business, that meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, any announcements, colleagues? Uh, Mr. Rosendahl was saying 2:15, Transportation Committee? Okay? Any other announcements? If not, do we have any adjourned motions today? Okay, if I can ask everybody to please rise in our council chambers for adjourned motions. Thank you. And if I can recognize Mr. Weezer first.
Thank you very much, Council President, and colleagues, it's, uh, today we discussed the bureau, the Department of Public Works, and today I'd like to adjourn the memory of one of our employees in Department of Public Works. Uh, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Petros Pete Petrosian, who served as a senior construction inspector for the Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration. Pete began his career with the city in 1986 after working for many years as an engineer and general engineering contractor in Italy, Africa, and Iran. He started with the Bureau of Street Services as a field engineering aide and promoted to the Bureau of Contract Administration as a construction inspector in 1989. He became a senior construction inspector in 1992. Pete was a lead inspector and played a major part in the success of some of the city's largest and most complex building projects. He was a mentor to other employees, always willing to provide guidance and wisdom. His professionalism and commitment to ensuring utmost quality in city facilities, construction projects, has helped shape the character of the Bureau of Contract Administration. The many new facilities Pete helped deliver will continue to improve the quality of life for city constituents for years to come. He will be sorely missed, but not forgotten, forgotten. Some of the key projects Pete worked on include the Convention Center, LAPD 911 Centers, Valley and Metro, Watts Library, Washington Irving Library, Fenice Branch Library, Los Feliz Library, LA Zoo, Travel Town Station, Pacoima Branch Library, Sun Valley Branch Library, Woodland Hills Branch Library, North Hollywood Library, Valley Traffic Division Police Station, Fire Station Number 81, and Fire Station Number 78. Pete passed away on Sunday, February 14th, and the funeral was held on the 20th. Petros is survived by his family, wife Felicia Petrosian, son Leo Petrosian, daughter Linda Yegnen, and brothers Vae and Mika. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alacon.
Clyde McAllen.
Uh, members, I ask for adjourned memory of Clyde Dawson McAllen, who passed away on February 22nd, he was wife of 41 years, Corley and his son, and two, uh, as well as 11 grandchildren, 15 great-grandchildren, and four great-great-grandchildren. Uh, also, members, I ask for adjourned memory of a great Dodger, Willie Davis, who succumbed to life, three dogs, as Mr. Alacon said, number three, a graduate of Roosevelt High School, still holds the city's long jump, uh, record, uh, was a tremendous athlete, was my favorite Dodger among many, uh, was key to the World Series championship. No one ran like Willie Davis ran in baseball. Being a left-handed hitter, no one could fly down to first base around those bases to get to third. He was so exciting to watch in the outfield as he went for fly balls. I had the great opportunity to meet him over the years, but also recently at Toluca Baseball, when they had their opening, he came out and threw the first pitch. Uh, he was truly an inspiration, as much love you could see from the obituary from fellow Dodgers, including Tommy Davis, no relation, who played left field, uh, said he was like a brother to him. So I ask for all adjourned memory of Willie Davis, one of the greatest Dodgers of all time.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBons. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. On behalf of Mr. Zine, I'd like to ask of the council, adjourn in the memory of Bob Reeves. Bob was born in February 1928, Minneapolis, Minnesota, to his mother Lillian and father Frank. He was very active in Boy Scouts and Sea Scouts until enlisted in the United States Navy at the age of 17. He served as aviation ordinance petty officer on the USS Intrepid, CV-11, which by the way is the aircraft carrier at New Har, uh, New York Harbor. Uh, an aircraft carrier in the Pacific Theater, and when the war ended, uh, he was part of the occupation force in Japan. He became an aircrew gunner and radar operator flying with VCN-1, a night fighter squadron in Barbersport, Hawaii, later flew with dive bombers in the Air Group Five until the end of his enlistment. He joined the US Navy Reserve and was stationed at Los Alamos Naval Air Station for another enlistment. He was awarded the World War II Victory Medal, American Campaign, Asiatic Campaign, Navy Occupation, and China Service Medal, and Good Contact Medal for his, uh, part in the war in the United States Navy. Bob became resident of California in 1949, and he has rided in Panera City since 1967. Bob joined the LAPD on September 10th, 1951, was promoted to sergeant in 1966, and retired in 1980, serving patrol, traffic, metro division, and juvenile divisions for the Los Angeles Police Department for 29 years. He became a college police officer working for LA Village College and was promoted to lieutenant of police, where he retired in 1998, with 16 years of service for a total of 45 years in law enforcement. On April 23rd, 1960, Bob married his wife, Mary Claire, they raised five children, Karen, Michael, Susan, Ann, and John, all of whom he is very proud. Family grew to 11 grandchildren, and Bob and Mary would have been, uh, celebrating their 50th anniversary next month. He was active in post, uh, Police Post 381, American Legion, and also a member of Post 2323 of VFW. He was loved in his family, he was very proud of his service to his country and the community. Uh, he will greatly, yes, by all, is from the LAPD.
Thank you very much. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? Mr. Alacon. Mr. Alicon?
I don't believe we did this adjourned motion, but I just discovered that a longtime employee for Mayor Bradley passed away, that is Brad Crowe. Brad served as planning and economic development chief for Mayor Bradley for many, many years, and among his successful projects were the wholesale produce market and the wholesale flower market. He served in West Hollywood as a planning commissioner. I wish I had more information, because he had such a tremendous impact on the Bradley administration and the many, many planning projects that he had the opportunity to work on, but I just received this by virtue of the LA Times obituary ad, so I'm just very sad to see another part of Mayor Bradley's legacy passing on, but I hope that Brad's work will be a legacy in and of itself. Good person, he, he loved the city of Los Angeles, wanted to work hard to make it better, that's why he went into planning, and has many, many friends and, and people who call him mentor, because of his, his ability to transform his thinking about planning and pass it on. So we all want to thank Brad for his service, and we wish his friends and family our condolences in his passing.
Thank you, Mr. Alicon. Mr. Curtis?
Just wanted to add to that, I knew Brad not only in his LA life, but in his West Hollywood life, where he was an active commissioner and, and community activist in the West Hollywood West area for the entire 25 years of West Hollywood cityhood, and was a good friend to, to many, many people in the city of West Hollywood.
And Mr. President?